Councilmember Bima Jacinto, will you be able to run the meeting since you are the most senior council member?
Sure, one moment. Okay, is everyone ready to go? It's 5:04, we're calling to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Coachella. The council sitting as the Coachella Sanitary District, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Financing Authority, Coachella Educational and Governmental Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority, and successor agency to the Coachella Redevelopment Agency. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, along with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration issued March 4, 2020, this meeting is being conducted both in person and via teleconference. Those who wish to join the meeting by Zoom teleconference can find the link and login information on the agenda on our website. Well, the clerk, please take a roll call.
Councilmember Bima Jacinto.
Present.
Councilmember Delgado.
Present.
Councilmember Galarza.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gonzalez is not here, and Mayor Hernandez also not here.
Thank you, clerk. The first item on our agenda right now is a resolution number 2022-77, which is a resolution to continue fully or partially virtual public meetings pursuant to AB 361. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Wait a second, the motion.
Okay, I'll take role. Councilmember Bima Jacinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza.
Hi.
Thank you, clerk. At this time, the council board, corporation, and authority may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continued to another date. Are there any items to be pulled or continued? All right, moving on to public comments on closed session items only, do we have any public comments for the closed session?
No, we do not.
Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session and will reconvene after we've finished there or at 6 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, welcome everybody to the agenda of the City Council Close Session and Regular Meeting of the City of Coachella. The council sitting as the Coachella Sanitary District, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Financing Authority, Coachella Education and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority and the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency at September 14, 2022. And just a reminder pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, along with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration issued on March 4, 2020. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference. The options, whether it be in person or via Zoom, public comments may be received either in person via email, telephonically, or via Zoom with a limit of 200 words or three minutes. With that, I'm gonna ask the clerk to take note of the attendance. We do have a full chamber. Or I'm sorry, a full council and with council member Bima Jacinto joining via Zoom. We'll move forward now on virtual public meetings. This is resolution, I believe you guessed it there, right? This is the Resolution 22-77, Resolution Continuing for Partial Virtual.
You did that already.
Yeah, we put a vote on that. I believe we did not take a vote on approval of the agenda.
Okay. We did not take a vote on approval of the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, at this time, the Council Board Corporation authority announcement is being pulled from the agenda. What are the wishes with respect to the agenda, Mr. City Manager? Any changes?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any items willing to be pulled or wishing to be pulled? See, now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem. Let's ask him for a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say yes.
Hi.
Yes.
We'll move on now to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. City Manager, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, are there any close session announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. City Councilman in close session on the item described, the agenda, received direction, but no reportable access.
Thank you. We'll move on now to overview of AB 617, air quality improvements for the Eastern Coachella Valley. Mr. City Manager, is there a presentation or who's doing his presentation?
I believe there is. You know, can you guys check the attendance?
Lean, welcome.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, council. Nice to be here.
Good afternoon.
I'd also like to invite our AB 617 community member, Anita Lu, who is also with me here today. So this is going to be a joint presentation mainly coming from the community. For those of you who are not familiar with AB 617, it is a program designed to work directly with community members in the Eastern Coachella Valley. The Eastern Coachella Valley was selected in 2019 to be one of the priority communities to work with. Here, this is where we work together with communities as they provide input to put forth a plan. It's a community emission reduction plan as well as a community air monitoring plan. We call those the SERP and the CAMP. So you'll hear those acronyms throughout. And so we have already completed that development phase. We are now into the implementation phase, trying to reduce exposure emissions in the ECV. And so we started off with about a 50-member Community Steering Committee. Through the years, we are now a pretty consistent 20 to 30 folks that attend our quarterly meetings now is when we meet. And so we are doing a little bit of outreach here just to let you know that we are in your city. And Anita will tell you a little bit more about which other cities are included in this Eastern Coachella Valley SERP and CAMP plans. And again, it's just a pleasure to be here. I do have a little bit of a hard stop, but I will try to stay and answer questions. But I put full trust in Anita in sharing some of the work that we've been doing in the community.
Okay, great, Arlene. Thank you so very much. And let me see if I can get to the beginning of this. And if someone can confirm that my screen is just.
Your screen is just fine.
Okay, great. And all righty, so good afternoon, council members and members of the public. My name is Anita Lu, and I'm a member of the Eastern Coachella Valley Community Steering Committee that was formed to advise and assist the South Coast Air Quality Management District in implementing the AB 617 Environmental Justice Program to improve air quality for our area. The program that we just want to give you a brief outline today of the purpose, the projects and the results of this program so far, and to basically open the dialogue with the City of Coachella to see how we can support some of the work that we know that you are doing. Let's make sure I got the screens in the right place. So with respect to the purpose of the program, the first thing we want to clarify is what is Air AB 617. It's an environmental justice program authorized by that regulation led by the California Air Resources Board implemented by local air district working in partnership with the community. That's myself, that's yourself, yourselves as a city to improve air quality. The communities in this program are those with constrained resources that have seen poor air quality outcomes in past years. And for the Eastern Coachella Valley, the community includes Coachella, Thermal, Mecca, Oasis, North Shore, Vista Santa Rosa, and the southern section of India. And the community is collectively called Eastern Coachella Valley Community or ECV. The projects that are within this program and the methodology by which it operates basically is that we have air monitoring, which is described in a document called our Community Air Monitoring Program. And we have physical emission reduction programs or control devices which are outlined in our Community Emission Reduction Program. So one we call the the CAMP, which is the air monitoring and the SERP for the emission reductions. And then education and outreach, because this program is largely centered on people, is a large fraction of what we want to do with this program. And since it started in 2020, we started just shortly before the pandemic had to pause, came back again. We've added air monitoring stations in India and Mecca to the air districts existing network. We added H2H, H2S, sorry, sensors and some other sensors in India and other sensors in Mecca. The emission reduction projects that the community decided they wanted to look at are around the Salt and Sea, that was our top priority, then pesticides, where we're working with Department of Pesticide Regulations, open burning, fugitive dust, including reducing illegal dumping diesel emissions, ensuring operation, proper operation of Greenleaf Power Plant and other projects. The other part of our program, as we said, that was central to what we're doing is partnering. And so our SERP says that we will pursue a collaborative partnership with cities within the ECV and with the County of Riverside to identify opportunities to and funding to reduce air emissions. So that is why we are here today, so that we can begin to get your feedback on how we can help. So while we have residents from India and all the various, well, most of the various communities that are part of the Community Steering Commission, we are aware that, you know, for example, we know that Coachella submitted a transformative climate communities project, I believe it was. And I think some of our folks are also involved in that. But the, you know, formerly, we haven't really aligned ourselves that much with the city's efforts. So we're here to, you know, just sort of adjust ourselves and make sure we get input from the city, which can be given at any time. This month in particular is critical because we're about to launch two new programs. One is a paving project where applicants will submit for $4.5 million grant that the South Coast and the ECV communities were successful in securing for our areas. And Robert Dalbec is a contact on that, and there'll be some criteria for that application. And the South Coast District will announce the criteria and the timing of that. The second upcoming project is a residential air filtration project where they were, we were able to secure a million dollars of funding. The South Coast staff estimates that we'll be able to support about 1,500 to 2,000 homes with air filters. And it will be issued on a first come, first served basis. We want to make sure we communicate that to you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the results. South Coast AQMD has a website. And there's an annual report that goes over all of these results of the program, which include regulations and emission reductions, a very promising and satisfactory result this year. The most important thing that we wanted to let you know is that the, how to engage with the group in the future and to find out from you how we can best engage with the city. The next quarterly meeting is coming up on October 27. We also have working groups and the city is certainly welcome to provide input or attend any and all meetings, just like any of the residents and community groups and other governmental officials that are part of the group. And then the, communicate the grants, upcoming grants. You know, we'll find out if there's any venue or, you know, mechanism set up so that we can communicate better with the residents in the City of Coachella about the grants. Any suggestions you might have? And the folks to contact are Arlene, who you met a few minutes ago. Or I'm sure you probably already know Arlene as a community liaison on the emission reduction projects at Salt and Sea and the like. There's Pedro, Diana, Robert Dalbec. And on the air monitoring, there's two folks on that and then Pravon on compliance. So with that, I wanted to leave some time for discussion, our questions or comments, because kind of feel we're a little bit late presenting to you and sort of engaging the city in this effort. And I think it's really important that we get your input. So with that, questions, please?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, council. Any questions?
I have a couple of.
Go ahead.
Anita, regarding the air filtration units or the air filters that will be installed in homes, could you just describe for us what kind of filters those are?
They are going, I'm not exactly sure. I think they're going to be ones placed in the room. Their indoor air filters. Any further detail on that, Arlene?
Yeah, let me, let me help elaborate a little bit. So there is a CARB-approved indoor filtration system list. And so that list is all CARB-approved. We are working with a community to specify a smaller list. It's a very large list that's approved by CARB. And there are some specific concerns by the community on which types of indoor air filtration systems they'd like to be used in specifically in the Eastern Coachella Valley. We understand that there's special needs, specific needs for the community and what they're measuring, PM, the dust, Salt and Sea, and whatnot. So we are working with the community to finalize that. We are at the stage now where the plan is being reviewed by CARB. And once that plan is approved, then we will put out an RFP as well that will then be followed by a a program announcement. And once that program announcement is out, then the residents can then apply for that. So we are working closely with the community. If there are any special recommendations that you aren't familiar with, we certainly would love to hear from you as well.
Okay, no, I don't have any recommendations. And I'm just happy to hear that the type of filters or filtration units is being decided by the community's input. And my second question or comments are built off of that, which is, you know, I understand that the AB 617 committee has a number of community members appointed to the official committee or whatever it is at the state level. And also that it's really been convening people from around the East Valley for a long time now. So I really appreciate the way that it's formed. I personally don't feel that you're late coming to the city because I think things should start in the community the way it has. And there probably are some, there definitely are some projects that we could work together on as a city and as a committee or a community project that you're driving. In that way, we can avoid duplication and hopefully leverage each other's projects as well and perhaps combine on some funding efforts. So to the, I'm actually not sure to what extent our staff might already be attending the meetings or not. But to the extent that we haven't yet, I would love to see staff better engaged since they're really the experts on what we have going and what we could potentially do in the future to partner in that way with you.
Great, yeah. Yeah, that's wonderful. That's exactly why we're here, just to share a little bit of some of that news and where we can continue to partner and collaborate. We don't specifically have someone representing City of Coachella on our current roster, but all our meetings are public meetings, open invitation. We do have folks representing residents, small businesses, businesses. We have a representative from Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia's office as well as the tribe. So certainly, like you said, a very well-rounded group of expertise around the community. And we will hopefully come back once some of those projects are finalized. And maybe we can spread the word out to the residents of the City of Coachella. We'd love to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, Arlene, I got a couple of comments. And I thought I saw like the composition of who was on the committee. And you're absolutely right, there was very little or none of the residents of City of Coachella as part of that. So to me, that's concerning, right? Because the ECV is, as you guys defined it, it's India, it's Coachella, backup thermal oasis. So very important that we try to get some representation on that board. And then it's also going to be very important that we do more than just emails and newsletters in terms of communicating with the residents. You know, a lot of the times in Coachella, you know, there are nonprofits that are involved, but sometimes they work in the unincorporated community more than they work in Coachella, the city. And it's that, that's okay too. But I think, I think our staff could help facilitate communication or letting our residents know either through our website or through our social media or through even our inserts that we have for our water and sewer reels where we can, you know, kind of let people know that this program is available. I would also like to suggest that when it comes to the other portion of the program, which is paving streets, that if we could work with our Public Works Director to identify some of the streets out in the kind of the rural agriculture area of Coachella. The kind of the rural agriculture area of Coachella. That would certainly benefit from paving and. I don't necessarily know if this was a consideration, but you know, well, you guys uh, have said that you're gonna take care of roads that. That don't have any paving. There's a lot of roads out there that, that have failing paving. So they had, they, when you look at where they grade, they're, they're in the Fs and Ds. Uh, of the, of the paving system that the state and, and the transportation agencies monitor. And so those roads. As well create a lot of particulate matter, particularly the ones that you all are concerned with, PM ten, et cetera. And I would also suggest that, uh, you know, that, that this program extend into. There's a few Palanco parks uh that are located within the city of Coachella. And then there's, there's a, a few state ran mobile home parks that could possibly benefit. From uh this program and, and I would suggest that. Uh, you work with our, our water utilities director because we've been working to provide water to some of those. And then he might have a better lay of the land of, of what the current road conditions are. On some of those parks. So I don't want those parks to be, uh, you know, forgotten about. And, and particularly when you look at, you know, the amount of dust that come out of there and where it's coming from, I think, you know, there's. There's a, there's an opportunity when it comes to, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand that. You guys will be offering for project. Like, what's the duration of the brand? Is it, is it just one year? Is it gonna be the next five, ten years? And how much money do you guys have to allocate?
So our six seventeen program is a five-year program. Um, that doesn't mean that we're gonna completely cut off ties with ECV at the end of. At the life of five years. Um, but uh. I, I'm not the um expert on the actual paving project, but I believe there's gonna be some maintenance involved. Like, once the projects have been implemented. There'll be some maintenance and just to answer your question, we, we are focusing, um, the community is focusing a lot on the Palanco parks as well as the mobile parks. Uh, those paving areas. And so I'll definitely look at to the, how long the duration is of that maintenance, but that is included as part of the paving project plan.
And I, I don't know if you can look again at, at failing agricultural roads. Uh, that, that's something that those are roads where you got a lot of tractors that are, are basically traveling through there and, and. The conditions of the roads are, are, are such that they, there's a lot of particulate that goes up in there.
Yeah, we'll definitely bring that, that back to staff. I really appreciate that. And again, as far as the lines of communication, we get it, you know, emails and newsletters don't. Aren't always the most effective. Um, Anita is leading this outreach working team. Uh, we have some other members on there. That are working on door hangers and actually, you know, do something ground and trying to get to residents this information. And. That's why we're here, visiting all the various cities to let you all know how we could pass on the word to residents. And so like, yeah, let's definitely. Collaborate and see what the best way to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we, we will do some, um, those of us on the committee as well. Um, we are in the habit of doing some follow-up meetings of. You know, obviously, it's a little bit easier for us. We're kind of just around the corner, so to speak. Um, so if you give us some names of, uh, you know, to follow up on in public works. And the utilities director and, uh, you know, also let them know we can, you know, probably set up a call. And at least make sure that before we move ahead, we have a conversation with them, a sidebar conversation and get their input. Um, so that will be helpful to us.
You, you know, and I, I would also suggest, uh, our code enforcement. Uh, officer as well, director, because he is, he works with a lot with the mobile home parks and then also the Palancos. And so he, he, he has a really good lay of land there. Uh, of, you know, what parks could benefit from knowing about your program?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we will um. Make those contacts. If we don't get a name or whatever from you, we'll reach out and start asking questions. We'll ask for, we'll call and ask for some names of folks that we can contact uh. Uh, the rest of this month and particularly in October.
We'll make, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that you know the names. And so thank you so much for your presentation and we appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Move on now to fiscal year twenty, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is the CDBG program overview. Is that you, Selena? Selena, welcome?
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and honorable council members. My name is Selena Jimenez, grant manager for the city of Coachella. And this evening I will be presenting uh a brief overview of our community development block grant program. What is the community development block grant program or CDBG program? If uh, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development administers the community development block grant program. And the city of Coachella is a cooperating city under the county of Riverside. And the primary purpose of the CDBG, CDBG program is to assist uh low and moderate income persons. And the main objective of the HUD CDBG program is the development of viable communities by providing. Decent housing, a suitable living environment and expanded economic opportunities primarily for low and moderate income residents. Uh, the national objectives of the program were established to assist local communities like the city of Coachella with activities that are focused on. Eliminating slum and blight, preventing deterioration of property, provided needed uh neighborhood community facilities. Provision of supportive services, uh, preserving and improving the supply of affordable housing. And the acquisition, design and construction and installation of needed public facilities, improvements and accessibility measures. Uh, and the creation and retention of jobs for low and moderate income persons through the expansion of business opportunities. And the provision of financial incentives to businesses. And here is, pardon me. Uh, here is a map of the city, city's uh CDBG eligible areas because uh, any project we propose must fall under the eligible census tract. And this year's uh approximate allocation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is approximately three, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And here in this slide, we have some project ideas from staff for further discussion by our city council. Uh, so please know that we have collected, you know, information over, over time about what the community might need and. Here's some, some ideas. Uh, number one, install permanent lighting at Shady Lane Park. Uh, apparently, uh, the park does not have. Uh, permanent lighting. And the second idea would be to improve the Bagduma Community Center, uh, so that it can make a transition to become like a. Community wellness pub. And number three, possibly consider improving the Coachella library annex as uh leveraging uh these dollars to further. Enhance uh the grant that we just recently were awarded. And this concludes the presentation. I wanna give our city council members the opportunity to provide input, direction, or maybe other ideas that we did not think about. That you know, um, the community uh has requested uh that they have a need or what have you. Now I would like to.
Yeah.
Open it.
Thank you, Selena, for the presentation, uh, council.
I, I, uh, I think they're great uh recommendations. I think one thing I continue hearing from neighbor, from, from neighbors, from. Residents is, is how can we support residents of creating some sort of a, a funding mechanism to ensure that. Uh, residents, you know, can access some funding to improve their homes, you know, especially like the seniors. That have beat up roofs, especially when it rains, it leaks into the communities, especially in all those eligible areas, like the older communities. Um, you know, getting, you know, permits and all that type of stuff. It could be costly and. Um, uh, there are families that are, are living in certain conditions in our neighborhoods that. Uh, you know, leaving from paycheck to paycheck. And if we were to create something like this, similar to what we did see from the. Green, green, green landscape project where families were able to access that money and people took advantage of that. But um, being able to do that and, and ensuring that they're able to improve. Their uh, the homes and neighborhoods. I think I'd, I'd like to see something like that. I commend, you know, the staff for all the great work. Um, at the same time, we, we, we last go around CBDG funds, we use. A good number of it to support the park, which is great. And we just received that grant for the library annex. Um, I think there's, you know, outside the box, I can, what are other. Targets that we have in act, uh, focused on. And I think this is. An idea from conversations that I have here down the street with neighbors, uh, going on walks or whatnot. And so just a, just thought, I, I don't want it to throw out there.
I, uh, I agree with you. And the last two years, I've actually brought that up about. Putting in a program that would help to revitalize some of the older. Uh, uh, homes and older, older, you know, communities that we have paying uh roofs. Uh, you know, new fences, facades.
Doors.
Doors. A lot of our residents right now, you go to the senior center, that's what they ask. You know, you go to. Uh, you, you know, you, you talk to just neighbors, folks are wanting to. You know, to, to improve their communities. Now. Last week, we, I think all of us here had the opportunity to go to the League of Cities. And four of us appeared, went to the League of Cities and there was a, a program that, uh, that was touched upon on how to revitalize. Uh, a, 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 a community or, or a neighborhood. And I think it was called the. Waste, waste.
One way.
One ways. My one ways commit, you know, and what they did is they worked with the university um to. To talk to the community and think about, you know, what, what is it that identifies that community? Or, you know, what is it that, that brings them, you know, like the sense of community, like they wanted to measure their social capital. And then from that. They wanted to put together a program or they put together a program that really looked at revitalization. And I think that's a, that's a, it's a good uh program. I think uh, when you look, uh, Selena, if you can put up the map again. You know, of, of, uh, of areas uh in Coachella that, that need improvements. And there, and there's, there's a few areas that, that I'd like to draw attention to when, when we're. Uh, one of them is, is uh, number, area number nine, census tract nine, and that's the. Uh, you know, Sierra Vista area out there and, and. It, that, that is a very old part of town and it's a, it's a part of town that is, that has really just been neglected. And you look at the housing stock out there. It, it's, it's very tired. And, and I think that from that standpoint. Um, you know, we can, we can help to just bring a little bit of, of, of life. Now, three hundred and six. Sixty-nine thousand dollars is not a lot of money. And, you know, what we should, maybe can think about is like concentrating an effort. You know, a year at a time in different communities and, and really kind of, you know, programming as opposed to just doing it all throughout the city. I mean, we got, we gotta start somewhere and, and, you know, maybe, maybe we look at our, our reserves as well and. Maybe augment that budget if we want to open up another area. Uh, along fifty-two, the corridor there too is, you got a lot of tired homes, a lot of, a lot of areas that need. Uh, some help now. Now here's something to think about. You, if, if we move on this program, we also are putting about a million dollars, Gabe, if I'm not mistaken, from ARPA. Right?
There's, there's. Five hundred thousand.
There's five hundred thousand. Okay, and then.
We still have the home funds too that can be repurposed for weatherization. Is that correct, Selena?
Yes, that's correct. And we can definitely include air conditioning replacement and the water heater uh replacement because those are. Uh, green energy uh items that um, the state is uh looking at as well. So we can definitely. Uh, couple this effort with um.
We have what? We have about four million in home funds?
Um, we have about. I think, uh, if Nathan is on, if he could help me out, I thought it was about two point five million.
So.
Yeah.
So two mil?
Like two mil.
Okay, so I, I think, you know, if we could. Think through a program and then I don't, I don't know if we call it, you know, let's think of a name, let's, or if, or if we wanna concentrate on the blue section first, I don't know. Three million dollars is not a lot of money to go in there and revamp these communities, but we have to start. And, and I think as, as, I think there's a lot of lessons that we can learn from neighboring communities when, when you see growth that happens and new homes that come in. A lot of, a lot of the, some of the communities get forgotten about and, and there's no programs. So I, I, I think, you know, really kind of thinking through, you know, what a program can look like. Three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, a million dollars from ARPA and then two more million from. Uh, or, or happen. So it would be like a three million right in there. And then come up with a theme and then just, let's just start going and. Really helping these communities. Now, the other thing that I would suggest to, and this is a, it's Selena, maybe you might wanna just kind of. You know, poke your head in there. But back in the day, Coachella was um. Very, very involved in CAP, the Community Action Partnership.
Oh, yeah.
And I know that CAP also has money for these types of programs, but we really have, we haven't had a, a representative there for. For a long time.
Yeah, we closed the office on Avenue forty-nine.
Yeah, I, I don't even think we have a, a seat anymore, but we were one of the original. But that, you know, anyhow, I, I think that'd be great. Just three million for the next year, year and a half, two years. It really helped neighborhoods. And I, I would, I would condition that, that they have to be owner occupied.
Owner occupied, um, and, and really pay attention to the most needy, the elderly. Uh, those that are on fixed income and, and simple things, uh, believe it or not, not having proper windows is considered uninhabitable. Not having a lock that secures you within your home is considered uninhabitable. So. Basic stuff that I think someone was taking advantage of. A lot of families, um. Doors are falling off, windows are broken and ACs, um, half the AC, you know, air goes up, broken windows in the cracks because the weatherization is bad. So there's a lot of needy families out there that don't have the money. And if we can focus on making their home habitable, the simple things. I, I would like that uh money to go towards that.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any other ideas? I mean, there's another idea.
Um, I'll just chime in. I'm really excited to hear council um, sort of coming. Coming around to this idea. Um, when I entered council in, in twenty eighteen, we talked a lot about the fact that the CBD. VG funds back then were allocated to actually enhance or fund uh code enforcement. Efforts against residents. And we talked a lot about how to reverse that and pull the funds away from enforcement and. Invest them instead in actually helping residents to either correct code violations or to upgrade their, their properties. And. It's been a long time coming, but I'm, I'm glad to hear, um, the council's in favor of that and I also support the idea.
Thank you.
I think we provided enough detail, Selena, for you. I know we only have so much money to go around. So I think you have enough direction.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we'll move on now to written communication. Is there any written communication?
We do have one for item number twenty-one and I will provide the details then.
Okay, a woman who consent counters recommended that consent items be acted upon time continuously unless separate discussion or action is requested by council member. What are the wishes of the city council?
I'd like to pull item ten.
Okay, uh, if there are no other items, uh, we'll move to item number ten. Uh, council member Bima Hossi.
Asking for a staff report on this item.
Nathan, it is the penalty interest rate for the deviants and transactions.
Um, would you like me to go through the basic concept of it or did you have specific questions that you wanted to address?
What's this for the, the record for anyone watching? Could you just give a brief overview of the concept before I ask my questions?
Okay. And there's not necessarily a presentation item, just a conceptual item that we're trying to. There are a few sections in the city's municipal code where it specifies that there would be a penalty enter, a penalty or um. Penalty interest should be applied. For example, with the cannabis tax, there is a penalty. Twenty-five percent interest rate included in the statute. But there is no penalty interest included in the statute. So it has been difficult to try to, it's supposed to be required, it's been difficult for me to. Quantify what rate we would charge that at because it specifically says the council will uh passes a separate resolution or rate for that purpose. So there, so to facilitate a baseline rate, obviously, this would not conflict with any other rate anywhere else in an agreement or a statute, but just for simply for those sections where we're completely missing a baseline. These rates are, the, the proposed rates are just basic, um, basically their, their industry standard for taxes is where we're deriving. Them from. So this is just to fill in that, that specific, the specific.
Okay, so, um, you know, I'm not as familiar with these financial. Okay, so, um, you know, I'm not as familiar with these financial. Items as you obviously, so that's why I'm asking the expert, it wasn't clear to me if this is meant to set a penalty for. Every, um, every type of late payment by. Someone that's paying into the city or is it just meant to apply to the TOT and cannabis taxes?
It's meant to apply to anything that doesn't have an otherwise specified rate. So it wouldn't, it would, for example, TOT has no rates, either penalty or interest, but asks for them to be applied. Cannabis has one, but not the other. It, there are other instances of this type of situation, so it would just be a baseline for where it's not specified anywhere else in the. Resolution is very specific about it only being applicable when there's nothing else, um, in place, because think about it, if council had approved a specific agreement that had a penalty provision in it. We wouldn't want this to override that penalty provision, so it's simply to be used when there's nothing else to guide the fee amounts or the. What we're using.
Would it go so far as to apply to like residents' payments of water bills to the city?
Um, no, so it, tho- those would be under completely separate circumstances, in other words, that would be part of the Prop two eighteen fee schedules and the council's approval of the fee specific to that. These would not apply.
Okay, those are all my questions, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent counter? Uh, there's a motion by, uh. Council member Beaman Hasito's or second, but there's a second by council member. Mayor Protem Gonzalez, all those in favor, see if I say nine?
Hi.
Hi.
Right. Motion carries, we'll move on to item number twenty-one, resolution. Two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-five, a resolution of the city of Coachella declaring the second Monday as. In October as Indigenous People's Holiday. Mr. City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will present, be presenting on this item. There we go, uh, this item was brought to us by Mayor Protem Gonzalez and Councilmember Beaman Hasito. Little background on this resolution. As we know from history, indigenous people have been living in the state nation for thousands of years, uh, before the European colonists. Uh, there are a hundred and nine federal fairly recognized Native American tribe in California. In nineteen seventy-seven, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed at the United Nations. Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations. On December sixteen, twenty twenty, the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. The resolution indicates that, uh, declaring and recognizing the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Holiday. Coachella would be the first and only city in the Coachella Valley to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. The city affirms the willingness to organize and participate in an annual, uh, Indigenous Pay Day People's Celebration and Activities. And it encourages other institutions to recognize the day and, uh, and affirm that city's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of Coachella Valley's indigenous community. We would like to modify the resolution to include the fo- the following in the recitals, whereas the city of Coachella lies within and in the proximity to the sovereign indigenous territories of the. Augustine Band of Mission Indians. Cabazon Band of Mission Indians, I will cut in the band of mission of Qu- Quea Indians. Course Martinez Band of Quea Indians, twenty-nine Palm Bad, twenty-nine Mo- Palms Band of Mission Indians and honors their indigenous heritage presence. And future destiny within the Coachella Valley. The alternative is, uh, recognize the day, no holiday and participate in an annual event for indigenous peoples. Uh, the other option would be, uh, just recognize the day, no holiday, no event, and the third option would be not to approve the resolution. During this time, I have any questions, comments or council direction?
We, that's Columbus Day, right? I mean.
It used to be Columbus Day.
Right, and then we, it's a national holiday.
Right.
And so we're offered that day.
No, we currently don't, we, I think in the past Columbus Day was moved to Cesar Chavez Day. So this would be a entirely new holiday that is not recognized, uh, by the city.
And then you're gonna, we're gonna recognize this as well in, in our union negotiation.
Correct.
That stuff.
And I think there were support letters from, uh, a few entities, correct, Angela?
Augustine.
Yes, and there was also a support letter from Teamster, Teamsters Local Union nineteen thirty-two. And it was written by Carlos Gonzalez. That one was also forwarded to council.
Where is it?
Okay.
Thank you, most to approve.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, council member Beaman Hasito.
What was that?
Go, go ahead, uh, make, make your comments, I thought you, I thought I heard you said you wanted to make some comments.
I did, I thought I heard Mayor Protem, uh, speaking and I didn't want to speak over her.
I, I just, I was saying we weren't done with comments because there was an ask to, to go to, to a vote. But we weren't done with comments, that's it.
I just made a motion, that was it.
Okay, uh, so the motion's on the floor, I just wanted to, um, you know, thank you staff for, for getting this here so that we're able to vote on it here. Uh, we've had a couple of starts and stops the last couple of years, so, so now's the time. Um, you know, adding to what was presented in the presentation just now, I think. We would be remiss to not also recognize that we have a substantial population of indigenous, um. Purépecha community, that's the second or third largest population in the world. Um, behind Michoacan, um, Mexico and also Chicago, Illinois. Um, so it's another tribe, even though it's, it's, um, different and it's, that, that community has migrated here, it's also a strongly indigenous community. That, uh, some of the leaders have expressed their support of this, uh, resolution to me. And also I just want to note as, as I think everyone, most everyone knows that in the last census. Um, it was clear that Latinos are more and more identifying as, uh, a Native American or indigenous, indigenous ethnicity. Um, as they're self-identifying the census at another arenas and so. You know, no better time than now to finally make this official in the city of Coachella as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Council member, council member.
I just wanna, um, voice my strong support, we've had, I've had several community, um, constituents come to me. From the moment that I was elected and that was four years ago, so it is time. And we are gonna do that. Um, and I think that we have the support, right, because that is the right thing to do, there's some wrongs that need to be. Made right and this is one of them, we need to recognize the indigenous people, not only, um, our brothers and sisters, the natives that were here. But also, as, as my colleague said, um, those that, that, um. Really don't have a voice, um, those that live in Mecai and, 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 um, and, um. Are even afraid to come out and, 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 uh. And does speak, so we need to celebrate all of our indigenous people in our community, in our city and, um. And I think this is the right thing to do.
Well, there is a motion, uh, I, I would, there's a second. Uh, I'll just thank both, uh, council member, uh, Beaman Hasito and Mayor Protem Gonzalez for. Collaborating on this and then I know, uh. Wonder if not both of you also made your rounds with, uh, with some of the, the, the reservations as well. And had a, a got buy-in from them, so thank you. And then there is a motion and a second, can we take a real call?
Yes, and I am honored to take this real call because my grandmother is Purépecha, so. This is awesome, so let me go ahead and, um, start with council member Beaman Hasito.
Yes.
Council member Delgado.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I will move on now to item number twenty. Do you want to say?
I.
No, he didn't call his name.
I.
All right, thank, counsel, thank you.
All right.
Okay. I, for the record.
You do that whole.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-six authorizing the purchase, purchase. And implementation of a, of a new enterprise resource planning system. Nathan, is this you?
It is.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started, um. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Um, we have briefly discussed the city's need for a new enterprise resource planning system, i.e. financial system. It's a little more comprehensive, just financial though, as we discussed and we did discuss this. Back when we were allocating ARPA funds, um, to different allocations and programs. Um, this is something that, uh. We've definitely, council's definitely been aware of, uh, different, different issues that have come up as far as city processes over time. Um, for example, the HOD process where council member Valarza was pointing out that. We had a very manual process once people actually got onboard with the city, even though our recruitment process was on manual, so this is a backbone system that we certainly need to consider, so. There's some details here. Um, by way of background, this is, this city currently uses Tyler, um, Tyler's Eden product. And, um. This is, it's a full, it's a full system across all the different areas of the city, but back, it is, it is an older legacy system that was implemented back in two thousand and two. So even back then, you, we are missing some components, some were available back then and never implemented, some are simply missing, so this is, is certainly not optimal, uh, the system that we have currently. Um, we also received official notice from Tyler that they are going to sunset the Eden product. Um, technically they gave us March first of twenty twenty-seven as the sunset date, they won't be supporting it after that, we would need to transition to something else before that date. However, due to the very manual nature of our close of the books. It would not be feasible to actually close out the year. Any other time than at a fiscal year end, so we would need to implement the new system effective July one, otherwise we'd have to do two closes and a close takes hundreds of hours of staff time because of the manual nature of the process we currently have. So really that leaves us with January, um, July first of twenty twenty-six is our kind of. Final date that we would need to get implemented by not proposing that we go out that far, just, um, that's the timeframe we were given. Um, Tyler is a preeminent, um, software provider in this space, um, they're probably the biggest one out there for the space that we're talking about, cities of our size. Um, the recommendation is to move to Tyler's Munis product, which would be the, the next, the next product that they came up with in this space, um, after Eden. Okay, in addition to just general functionality, um, you know, able to. Input documents and cleaner coding, that sort of stuff, there are some significant new, um, new functionalities that we are looking at implementing in the new system as well. Um, in the financial system itself. It, right now, you walk into city hall, you have to go. Manual paper to pay your business license tax and separate piece of paper to pay your cannabis tax, separate piece of paper to pay your building permits. Um, this would have an integrated, uh, kind of across all the taxes portal that, um, residents would be able to use, I think this is our biggest limitation. On the system right now is we aren't able to directly interact with, um, with constituents. Um, right now we're doing a bunch of manual processes, so this would definitely, even bank reconciliations we're doing on Excel spreadsheet, so this would certainly be it. Um, and add new functionality to what we're doing. Permitting would be a huge component of why we were looking at this in the first place, as we discussed back during our proper discussions. Um, this would allow it, you know, put a seamless process in place, so residents could get their projects in, actually go through the process of projects, go back and forth with the appropriate city planners. Um, inspectors, et cetera. So that would add that, we do not have that currently, we just simply track permit, all that this is, and what this do is put in permit information, dollars, uh, and that's pretty much the extent of what it does right now. Human resources, we do have a couple, um, again, onboarding. Is definitely, we have recruitment is great, we have a system for that time, we have a system for that, but it doesn't integrate back in all the way back down the. The processes, so then we end up with papers and binders and not integrated into the system after the front end. So this would have a more integrated, we'd still be able to keep the products that we have, but a more integrated, a full, full-scale, um, P H R component. Um, the thing that the city does not have right now, and I think is probably one of the biggest limitations that we're facing in this regard, is. Basically tracking programs, mostly grants, but programs and project management. So right now, one thing that we're not doing and haven't historically done is we have not actually charged to, um, programs, uh, city staff time, city costs, that has to. Just the way that the requirements work, it needs to go through the system to track approvals or they will deny the, the costs when we get audited later, so we just haven't been able to do that very well with the system. This will add a whole new functionality to that, it'll actually allow for, if council has questions about where are we at with a program, rather than us having to go grab some reports that may or may not line up and try to figure out where we are. It'll have a real, it'll have real-time capability, it, because it'll be project tracked, right now we just use account coding and literally it's the name of the account, so we put the grant number or. Street project improvement number next to it, that's how we track it, so. Definitely would be an improvement in that regard and would be a whole new set of functionality there. Um, overall efficiencies. It definitely, this is probably the biggest hole in the current system is, for example, invoices. I know that council was concerned about some of the financial reports that went out late, for example, during COVID. But one of the bigger issues that didn't come up but was there was even once we had full access remotely to the system. It, we didn't have invoices to pull, so you still have, only be able to pull them when you're on site. We've since, um, digitized quite a bit of this, but it's in a separate file, file system. So you still have to go to the system, look it up and then go look up the support, whatever it is. This would actually integrate, you would be able to pull up an invoice and actually be able to pull up the picture of the support document straight up in the, in the module, so. There's quite a bit of functionality that would be added with the, with the proposed system implementation. Okay. Now. With the. That being said, there's quite a bit of benefit to this and that's definitely something that we need to. Look at, but at the same time, implementing a system like this is a very, uh, very daunting, um, task, so. It's a multi-department, keep in mind, this is not just a financial system, this would have interaction with code enforcement, planning, building inspector, all be, all be switching to a new method of tracking and. Um, keeping, keeping the records all the way across to public works, um, this is comprehensive across all departments. It is a multi-year, where you'll, I have a product, a proposed project timeline, as we're looking at roughly two years to implement, um. It will consume. At least a thousand hours of city staff time across all these departments, I don't think that even realistically includes the time for training, because you have to realize that. I mean, eighty percent of city staff at least is gonna have to do comprehensive training to get up to speed on the new systems, which is a good thing, it's just that we do have limited staff time as it is. Um, this will, this will pull resources from other city projects, I mean, we have to be realistic about that in that we'll have certain deadlines to get this up and going that will pull from other things, so. I just wanna. I just want council to understand, this is the, quite an undertaking that you'll, you'll see it elsewhere as, and city operations. Um, there are risks to implementing a new system, I, I mean, just, I did. Work for a city for, as a client. Uh, that implemented a new system. They had, it did not go well, they were not able to get their utility billing straight for three years in the implementation process. So I just want council to understand, um, exactly where these things can go, um. In, in that example, a lot of it did have to do with they did get a beta product, you know, version three versus the two that they had been, so, you know, sold. So that didn't help, we can probably bet that out, but I'm just saying there, there, some of these things do, there is risk involved in doing these projects. I do believe that we have the capacity and the expertise needed to do it, it's just simply, there's quite a few moving pieces with it. Um. Staff is not only looking for council to necessarily approve a dollar limit here, I, and this all refer back to me, just, I, I do, because I'll kind of be. In the middle of this, I do, I do want, you know, to make sure that I have council's support. Behind this before we embark on this as well as, you know, just the approval to, to do that, so. That's why I'm kind of making sure that we're on the same page with it, because there will be times when this will pull from, from other city operations. Um. So. That being said, this is kind of how the implementation process. Um, breaks down. We haven't, we haven't, and this is what makes it a little bit complicated to think about it, we have a bunch of legacy accounts, coding, that sort of stuff, all has to be worked out, so I don't at this point in time know exactly how we're gonna work all that out. Um, this'll, and that's the nature of this type of project, it'll be a fluid project, as we see what problems we have and what our structures are and the new structures, we'll, we'll have to, it'll be kind of a fluid, um, a fluid situation in how we develop this. So. Um, it's certainly gonna be time-consuming. It's, I guess what I'm. Um, I did a breakdown at the. Kind of like a project. This is what we're looking at as far as it being a multi-stage project, so we're talking about five or seven, uh. Bigger, you know, large-scale stages, obviously there'll be multiple component pieces in between there. Um. The. The idea is to, the actual contract finalization. Will be a process in of itself, I didn't share the, I can share the quote with council of. I didn't share the, I can share the quote with council, if any of you would like to, I didn't want to share it in port, public forum, they did ask that we keep the quotes while we're in negotiations, not a public item. But it is simply, it is a list of a massive number of different modules, we could get the fixed asset module, we could not get the fixed asset module and maybe. You know, forty other pieces in there. So we, finalizing the contract is gonna be a process in and of itself, I mean, we're gonna have to figure out what the different models do, what, what we're finalizing, so. This is the full quote right now, we do have to narrow that down, expecting that to take through the end of this year, provided we move forward after today. We definitely have our chart of accounts is twenty years old, it's not structured consistent with current financial reporting requirements. So that would be, the, the biggest component of this would be the financial system, once that's in place, you can start putting different modules on, you can't put anything on until you have the account structures in place. So, looking at a new system set up through June of twenty twenty four. Shooting for a go-live date on the financial side of July first twenty twenty four, again, we want to keep it consistent with the fiscal year and we certainly not gonna make it to the twenty twenty three. Deadline, don't wanna, don't wanna even track, it would be too much risk, so. And then after that, we would, you'll notice that like on the permit module and the human resources module, those are concurrently being implemented according to this schedule. If we have the resources to do it, it would be best to do them concurrently, obviously they are different departments. If we, if there's gonna be too much crossover, it would be possible, we have to stagger those, that would push the timeline out when we actually get. You know, the grants management implemented, but all this would be worked out as, you know, best we can as we go, as we go along and figure out what we actually are dealing with. So that's the, the, again, this would give us plenty of time in that we have through July first of twenty twenty six to make sure that we have it implemented, but. That is just a, kind of a overall project. Timeline. Okay, as far as budget, budgeting goes, if you look at this and there are multiple pieces, this is not like there's gonna be one agreement or one component. Tyler's quote. Across the borders for one point one eight four million. That is consists of the system, system implementation. The nine hundred and forty-eight thousand. We do pay, we do pay annual fees on these systems, we paid on the current system, we paid on the new system, no matter what system we have, we would have that, we would pay the first annual fee upfront. I didn't for sake of time, but on the presentation, go into it, but we do have, one of the advantages to going with another Tyler product is we'll be able to keep the current system. Operational, you won't be paying licensing fees on two systems simultaneously, that is on the cost side. Would be prohibitive for us to, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna have, we wouldn't wanna be locked out of our current system. While we transition to a new system, so if we were doing a separate software provider, other than Tyler, we would end up in a situation where we need to keep both running simultaneously and be charged. For the annual ongoing costs for both.
So this is an updated Tyler?
It is, it is not, I don't think update's probably the right word, it's not just a, we plug in a version three. But it is, it is another Tyler product, it's their, their newer, fully redesigned, but their newer product. So the annual fee included in that, and then the travel expenses here, the thirty-eight thousand three sixty. That is what's included in the one point, one eight four. The other items, the project manager. The additional training, specialized consultant staff. The staff overtime, those items are all kind of a combination depending on how, how best we can address this on the resources. That we have, so in other words. If, if we have adequate, if we think that we have adequate capability to manage the project internally. We wouldn't hire a project manager to oversee the whole project, they are very, they are very expensive. But, but at the same time, that would take more staff time to not hire a project manager. So it's gonna be a trade-off between hiring and same thing with specialized consultant staff, right? If for utility billing, we could probably bring on a consultant that's very familiar with that, but whether that trade-off is gonna be worth it. In the understanding of our system and our situation versus just them still having to fall back on staff. We'll have to see what the, what we under, what the requirements are as we put these modules in, so. What we're, what we're asking is just to approve the total project budget. These pieces have not been formally vetted right now, but. The funds would shift across these categories for the additional items. And again, this would go back to what is available, city resource wise from other projects as well. So pulling temps in, if we need to get something else done, that's where I think we would have to structure as we go. Alright, so I did, in the staff report, I had quite a bit more about. Selection process and why we stuck with this system and that sort of stuff, I just kind of left out of the presentation, because the recommendation is simply to move forward with this. If there are any specific questions or any further questions in general that council has, though, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them and. Any others, I mean, city staff is all here, we'll all be involved in the process, any other questions outside of specifics that I'm talking about. What's up?
The numbers that you, prices, were those hard numbers or?
So, the quote, the quote is, the quote is a, a full quote from, from Tyler. Those numbers are as hard as we can get at this point, there are a couple modules in there, for example, that. What they say they do and what their full functionality is and whether we need them for sure, I haven't been able to vet yet. We have gone through demos for various sections back in December, city staff did spend a couple weeks going through those. So we're familiar with the big picture of it, but there might be a couple things, for example, that we don't end up including in the, in the project itself. And that's, that's why we need to kind of start with the contract process itself, start narrowing that down a little bit. So it's, it's kind of like a hard number in that, that would include everything that we want, whether we're gonna end up including everything that's on that quote list is not a hundred percent at this point, because. I, it's gonna be a lot of time, we'd have to do, for example, a demo on X module to see if we want it. If council doesn't, wasn't willing to move the project forward, it would be a lot of city staff time just done to figure this out and not get there, so. That'll be the process that we go through in that six months of contract setup.
Nathan, as far as I'm concerned about the training, since we're going from one department to another. Is that there has, there been maybe a plan put together as when training would take place?
So what'll happen with the training and this, this will primarily be handled by Tyler. And it is, it is in the cost that they had. In their quote, they will put together the training based on the modules that we're implementing with the staff that's involved in those modules. Obviously, that's subject to us getting on the same page as far as who needs to be in the training, but it will be a very, it'll be, and I have, I have dealt with implementations of Tyler, not the specific. Software product, but their, their other product before, they'll be, they'll give us a very, a very, actually it'll be a very rigid schedule of training. That we'll have to work with.
Have they provided any of that yet?
They have given, they've given ideas like how long it takes, that sort of thing, but as far as scheduling and that sort of thing, obviously we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
And then how long does it take?
Since, you're talking about.
Training for module for department.
Oh, it's, it's gonna vary by, it's gonna vary by module, but for example, like the, like a utility training, will probably. What'll happen is they'll, they'll have an overall training and then they'll have specifics, so putting it all together, they'll maybe have like a court, it'll be a day of training. On, you know, basic utility accounts, now that won't include maybe how to do account adjustments. Or how to do tax roll, what we put on the tax roll for collections, so that'll kind of be a separate thing, so. It'll be pieced together, but it will be, it will be extensive training, I mean, you're talking like all day type of training or maybe all morning and then. The afternoon, two days later, that type of training, just, just the, just the demos, I mean, the one module would be four hours. The financial system was an eight-hour debt, just the demo, no, we weren't even pushing buttons.
You, you said that you have experience being trained by, by Tyler. What, what was your overall experience in terms of the quality of the training, did they provide you enough training to be able to? Hit the floor running and implement and work this new area a lot.
They, they do their best to put together a thorough program. It is though, in the environment of it's new to everyone and everyone's old systems kind of, you know, being backburnered. So, so they, they do do their best to do, I wouldn't say it's the best training in the world, but. But it is, it is as good as it can get in, in the circumstances, has been my experience.
I think my concern more is, is how much staff are gonna be pulling in for how long? Because as you mentioned, we don't have, you know, a lot of staffing as, as it is per department. And so I am concerned about how much we're gonna pull or how many employees we're gonna pull and then how long is the training? And then how much impact is it going to have on current projects or daily, you know, responsibilities?
And that is my concern as well, that is part of the reason this item has taken a little while to work its way, its way through. It is, it is one of those things, though, we can do it. It's just, it's, it's gonna be a little bit tight going, getting through the process, so it is a concern. There's no way around it.
Yeah, are you recommending today we pass it?
No, just to move it forward.
Yes, so basically, basically what we need today is approval for the funding. There's no point in even doing anything if we're not gonna commit all the funds that we need. And then to start, start and have the ability to enter into the contract agreement for, with Tyler. And obviously this'll take some time, so the attorney.
I, I have a, a couple of areas of, just in terms of what I'm thinking. I, I, I think it's gonna be important that we. As the city grows and as technology has progressed. You know, back of the house bureaucracy upgrades is, is very much needed, right, in terms of how we do our job and. How you all do your job and, and, and to echo the sentiments of, of, of a few consumers up here about training, I think that's. That's gonna be very, very key. As well as finding. Leaders within. The bureaucracy that, that can really help to bring others along. And champion these changes, because one of the worst things that we wanna see is that. There's not a, a buy-in from, you know, our street level. You know, back of the house bureaucrats, they are gonna use this program. So, so that to me is, is gonna be very important to, to, for us that, you know, that. That if we go down this road. That there are champions within the organization. Mister city manager that really take this on. And, and that become a, within their departments. You know, leaders to, to usher this in, if not, it's not gonna work. And we're gonna spend a lot of money. My, my next area of concern is, is as we go through our bureaucracy. And I know you, you've set aside. Where you're asking for an allocation of. About one point three, you know? That we run into scope creep. And that somehow this budget goes from one point three to like one point six, one point seven, one point eight. Because, one, we may have not identified all of our, kind of our, our. Our, you know, cogs and spokes in our bureaucracy and what needs to adjust and what needs to be fixed, but. I need to be reassured that you know what our bureaucracy looks like and that you've identified, because. We don't wanna see scope creep, you know, and anytime you do technology, technological upgrades like this. That, sometimes that happens, and that's, that's another issue that I, you know, I've come across in my work that. What was originally envisioned at one point three. You know, bureaucratic kind of improvement and implementation grows. So, so be very, very mindful of that. And my third area of, of communication is that, well, the back of the house. And the beer, you know, our bureaucratic chains are getting improved and we're using technology, etc. It's, it's the constituent, like who's gonna use this? And so, there's gonna be, we're gonna need to be very flexible and train. Our residents on how to access this information too. And one of the things that's concerning for me is that, if we're gonna go completely automated and online. Well, a lot of our residents don't have access to the internet or computers or even literacy. In order to, like, to navigate these systems. And so there are gonna be some processes that. We may have to do a hybrid model. You know, just simply because of like, hey, how we're serving our constituents, because the. You know, under, understanding the internet is, is, is tough for me, you know, among the folks. So, so what that looks like and how we, how we put like videos or demonstrations or. You know, so that our, so that our residents can know how to use our system. I mean, to me, tho- those are my, like, the, the three things that, that I really kind of just like concerned about or, or just would like at least. More clarity in, in. Kind of, you know, the, the process in which we're gonna undertake. I, I think, you know, that. It would benefit us as a community and as a, as a government, right, to, to really. Upgrade ourselves and then to have communication across departments. I think, you know, it's, but it's gonna be a matter of how we implement this, it's gonna be a matter of. How you get stakeholders and buy-ins from, from your, from your staff, from the staff here.
And those are, those are definitely on the top, on the top of concerns for a project like this. I don't think that they are our biggest risk in this particular project in that. I am actually getting pushed from the departments to bring this item. So, development services is certainly behind, they, they definitely see the, the great need for a permitting system. To assist the residents in being able to get through their projects, because the process is just simply not functional. In today's time, what we have from twenty years ago, and so I am certainly, Dr. Martin is certainly. On board with, on board with this, so I do believe that we have, and I mean, all the department has, I have, I, I'm getting more, let's get this done than I am. Anybody saying, let's not do this, I think I'm probably the one that's the most concerned about. About getting this done, obviously a lot of it would fall on the finance department. As far as the scope creep goes. I can only say where we are right now, I do believe that these numbers adequately cover what we are going to need. And I believe that this, they're, they're conservative, however, as you said, things can come up in a project. I think that what I would, I think what would be important here was as, if we had any change in scope. That was gonna come up, I think what we could commit to with council is keeping council in the loop upfront. And where we are with it. Again, we can only make, I mean, best-laid plans as of today, we. I don't, I don't feel that we have it, I don't feel that we have a tight budget, I'm certainly not trying, I certainly did not try to get those lowest budgets so that council would approve this. That was the budget that I, I just picked what I thought we should have so that I could honestly come and bring it to you. I mean, if, if council doesn't wanna do this, me personally makes it easier, but, with a side note. And then as far as the community, we have, we have, certainly have that, that consideration that obviously not everybody's gonna jump on and start using the city's personal. You know, portals to make payments, so whatever the case is, we will certainly be keeping, we will certainly be taking on. Payments and doing the processes manually, manual processes would look different in that we would, we would be, we would have to do the input for example, on a permit process. If someone wasn't able to log in and wasn't familiar enough with the system, didn't have access to the internet, something like that. But it would, it still go through the same process, but city staff would still be able to. Place the documents and pursue whatever it is into the system. And then they just, the residents wouldn't necessarily have to access it in any way, which is kind of where we are right now. Anyway, so there wouldn't, there would always be a workaround in that regard.
And so long as that. That culture and that personal touch stays. That, that's important, you know, because our residents are, are used to having, you know, assistance, you know, filling out this paperwork and, and. And, and I've seen, you know, bureaucracies where. They become just that, you know, very, very unpersonal and, and navigating the system is extremely tough. And so I, I'm hoping that that's not. As, just gets laid out and it gets implemented, and there's, you know, cultural changes that occur with this type of technology. That we, we keep that nimbleness.
And I'm hoping that this will actually help us with that, because right now, sometimes we are just giving people a form and saying, please fill this out. It would, it would be a little bit easier if we could walk them through a, a more structured process. And I mean, literally, I mean, even if we had to put kiosks out and stand there with them to go through the process, that would be more beneficial to them than the current. Very manual, because it's not all in a fluid situation, you're, it's like, what do I do next? Okay, well, you do this and then they go over to the next building and then what do I do next, so they go to the next department. This would at least be able to allow us to train people up to get them through a whole process in, in one.
I, I definitely think we need an updated system, I think it's very dated and, and with an efficient program, it improves productivity. And so I think that's what a lot of the departments are asking for, for that assistance, especially when we don't have enough staffing to begin with. I think when, have there been other cities that have made the transition? And then are you aware of some of the challenges that they went through when making the transition?
I mean, cities, a lot of cities go through the transition and.
The same program, so.
Oh, yeah, I think they have, I think they have two thousand customers, something like that on, on this program, so. That is, that's a lot of customers and there's a lot of, there's a lot of upgrading going on right now, they're, they're actually kind of. That is, that's a lot of customers, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of upgrading going on right now, they're they're actually kind of swamped too, which is not helpful, but.
They share some like the main challenges perhaps and focus in those areas where they see that most assistance was needed.
The big, the biggest thing that they pointed out, the biggest thing that I have seen is you don't get the project plan correctly to start with. And that's where, that's where they're they're recommending a project manager, that type of, that type of input. That could be offset with with city staff knowing their systems better. But then that presumes that we have the capability to do that, which we do, I I feel that the team certainly understands their needs sufficiently to. Do this, so. Uh, but that that is the, that is the biggest, the biggest issue, because if you don't set this up right, you kind of live with it for the next, you know, ten, twenty years. And you're fighting it the whole way, the whole time, so it that's the setup time is worth the time taken. And in the back, you know, without anything else being a problem, you would spend all the time you need, obviously, that takes from other stuff, so that that's the, that's the concern there. But for sure, that's the biggest, that's the biggest problem on these implementations.
Nathan, do we, did we shop around or how do we land with just Tyler?
Okay, so. There are, there are a limited number of products on the market. I have used a couple of them that would not be conducive to what we're doing, so. That that we were able to preclude a couple of them in that way. Um, then simply it's a matter of cost. And the fact that we're going from a Tyler product to another Tyler product. There there isn't a, there isn't a better or more comprehensive or, you know, more spectacular system out there. One of the biggest limiting factors to one of, for example, one of the systems we looked at. They had a financial module that wasn't theirs, so they were trying to sell us the budgeting component, that was their thing. But they had a partnership with another software company that give you the financial, and they were able to interface those. And then they also could do a permit system from somewhere else to put it together, so we immedi- we immediately eliminated anyone that couldn't do a full, a full scope project. I mean, if there's a little, couple little tweaks that we need to get an outside provider on, fine, but we certainly don't want a bunch of pieces of software running around the city, it's just. They never work right, so that eliminated quite a few providers, because it is, there aren't, there are maybe three or four companies that can just provide a full up. Full suite of uh, software. So that that definitely narrowed it down, then the costs for the. This the savings on the licensing fees, that sort of thing that Tyler is not charging us as they keep the old system in place. It would be, it would be next to impossible to do this if we had to transition all of our data from the previous system, we just don't have the resources. Transition from the previous system into the new system, because we can't keep the old system up and running. So this will allow us to do a divide, we won't have to bring in all the transactions from forever in the old system. Because we'll still have that accessible and we can move forward, plus I do have data integrity issues going back that far, just the way that the system works, it was not designed very well in that regard. Um, so so that that will allow us to transition this, and then the the final consideration was, we do have several. We do have Tyler compatible and Tyler specific, so our cashiering system. Is like all the little tape machines, all the drawers. That sort of, all that setup is a Tyler product. So that product will simply integrate with the new system, there's no, no change in that, we won't have to retrain all the, all the, I mean, they'll need to know new account coatings. All the customer service reps, but they won't need to, they won't need to retrain on the cashiering, so that's a huge benefit there. Uh, same thing with our time entry and kind of the payroll module type of stuff, that also integrates and is a Tyler-supported product. So. Those were, those were our primary considerations and narrowing it down to. Down to um. This this software.
A smoother transition than not having to pay for the two programs when transitioning. And then not paying for the two programs when transitioning.
Yes, not paying, well, not paying for the two trends, the true, and then not paying for for two complete systems, just run simultaneously.
Nathan, so we've heard a lot of concerns, change is difficult. Some people go with the flow, others will resist it. It obviously comes down to the relationship between the management managers and. Their direct reports, right, to find buy-in, and I trust that 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 could occur. Of course, the automated system where when we get to a point where it's up and running. Um, you know, we're gonna have that added support for those that still need that help, right, to access this. Um, machine that's gonna take their payment, I wanna know. After all of this is implemented, what is gonna be one of the. The outstanding uh, wins with having an upgraded system, which we really, really need. Because I know constituents are gonna ask me, you're spending a million on a computer. Tell me how it's gonna help for me, so what would I tell my constituents in that, in that, if they ask me that? And I know that there's gonna be several that are.
Of course. I think the 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 biggest benefit, the biggest investment in the system is actually the forward-facing components of the system. Which directly benefit the constituents through. I mean, it's not, it's not about being able to do online payments, you can online pay your utility bill right now. It's, it's just about having a more integrated system that. It functions seamlessly without a bunch of different pieces involved, different pieces of paper, different people to talk to. It's, it will certainly put a forward-facing input into the system. That will benefit them directly in dealing with the city. Even if we look at the screen and give them the information, it will all be there, we don't have to send them.
They can look at the screen.
They can look at the screen, or we can look at the screen for them, but even when we look at the screen for them now, there's different pieces in different places.
That you gotta navigate.
Yes, I mean, engineering's files are stored there, finances are stored there, plannings are stored there. You you can't just walk in and go, well, I'm helping you with the business sizes, but you were wondering if your planning is even, if your plan's been reviewed, let me just. Let me just take a look, we can't do that, I mean, it's literally like, go talk to planning. Because we don't have, so this would be a kind of an integrated across the boards.
I I think I'm very supportive, I just, I just, I understand, you know, trust it, new trust staff on this, but the number of the money is like. I didn't expect the cost of a million dollars. And that's a, that's the the concern is, so everyone's on board to get this done, it's just. It's a lot of money, so so, I mean, um, I I trust staff recommendation, you know, if if council does too. Um, you know, you are the professionals on this, I.
Well, let's talk about the money then, because.
Yeah.
So five hundred is coming out of ARPA. Thought I saw five hundred out of the general fund and one fifty out of water and one fifty out of sewer. Grounding. Now, in terms of how we're gonna. Structure that, is it gonna be over two years? So ARPA, obviously, one year, and then. Next year's budget, you'll have another piece, and then the following year's budget, you'll have another. Or is it all gonna be one swoop, and then was this budgeted for on this year's general fund?
Okay, so there will be different project milestones as we implement the, as we implement the different modules, so Tyler's contract will be structured based on certain. Certain milestones, there are one point uh, one million dollar component of that would be based on that. The other pieces would depend on where we are with the project when we implement, so except, for example, if we bring on an expert uh, to help with the. Utility billing, that would be brought on at uh, at the time that we get to that module, so a year and a half into the process. Um, if we needed the expert to get the financial system implemented, then we would bring them on at that point in time. Um, we do have, we did have in our assigned fund balance, we did have the, we did have the six hundred thousand dollars. Um, allocated for this um, at as of last year's ending financial statements. And then we did have the five hundred and fifty allocated in the um, in the ARPA funds for it. Um, the water and sewer component is simply the, is simply a shared cost, and that's based on simply their allocated cost. As as their other allocated costs are are derived, it's like eighteen percent for each of them, based on their, based on their share of admin costs of the city. So that's, I mean, that's the funding structure, that's where the dollars come from. We may not end up using all the money. Um, I mean, there, there's a potential that it goes that way too, it's just that that's less likely than the other way, as from experience in general. But that, I mean, that's, that's where we are with the funding.
I think though, by not bringing in a project manager or specialized consultant staff, I think we run the risk. Of spending more money in the future. Just because if we have a ticket on ourselves and we don't have the, you know, specialty or the training. I I'm concerned about going over. You know, what we have here. And that just from changing from one um, program or system to another. It's very expensive, because obviously, it's the program itself, but then most people don't then take in, you know, the manpower behind it that's needed. And obviously, that's what's driving, you know, the rest of the costs here up. But I am concerned about if we're attempting to not use some of this. You know, allocations, you know, whether it's additional training or consultant staff. Is, you know, if we run into some errors and some more uh, maybe setbacks, is that how much is that gonna cost us even more in the long run?
Agree, and that I am not in any way planning on doing this if we're trying to, if we're trying to do this uh, cheaply. Because I know that 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 will, that will be exactly what happens. We'll end up spending more in the long run, so.
That's exactly the scope creep that I was talking about.
So I did, I did build in those consultants, and I mean, I didn't wanna just come in and say, here's a quote from Tyler. I mean, that's why there's a couple hundred thousand dollars extra in there for those different components, because I I know that we're, I know we're gonna need them to start with. And if we try to, if we try to minimize those. We're, we're not gonna help ourselves out, so, yes.
I just wanna make sure that we can afford this, right, and so we're looking at one point or it's one point four. I really wanna make sure that this is it. And then obviously, there's proper planning, um, and that we're getting the consultant. Training and assistance that we need, so that we're not running into more future problems, especially as we go from one transition to another. Gabriel, um, what is your input on the program?
I think uh, as it indicated, the whole team is on board with this uh, this transaction, it's something that we need to do, we need to modernize our city. Make it more automated, the benefits will be, it will expedite our processes, make us more efficient. Uh, we'll turn around plants quicker, permits quicker, uh, you know, people get quicker responses to their inquiries. Uh, and I just think it'll just bring us up to the modern world, everything's done automatically. And we'll still be conscientious, as the mayor indicated, of our, of our, of our, of our generation that just wants to come in and fill out a paper form. We'll make sure we guide them through the process and, you know, give them the, serve the same thing we do when the individual pays for his water bill in person, so. We're conscientious of that, we'll develop a hybrid system to address those concerns. In regards to the funding, we've been saving for this project for a while, we knew it's coming, uh, Eden is gonna go away in twenty twenty seven, so it's something that we have to do. Uh, if not, then we won't have a financial system anymore, so uh, this is a good start, we've been, we did our due diligence. It makes sense to just go with the same tighter system and upgrade it and move it forward, so I think uh. Uh, it's a good time to start doing it, it's gonna take, as you, as you saw the schedules, it'll take a while to do it. But we hope to have council support and we will be conscientious of scope creep. Uh, I would love to throw a ten percent contingency in there, just, you know, I know how projects work, but. It's already there, okay, perfect, so then we can move forward that way, but I think it's uh, important that we start this process now, because uh. Uh, the longer we wait, the longer we'll get outdated with our our current system.
Well, we'll, we'll bring back a presentation at the, at the milestone, so like, when we get the contract in place. That that'll give you a little bit, I mean, once we get the contract in place, obviously, it would be in place, but at least I'll kind of give you a guidance of where we are. Um, so that, so that council, I mean, this is a long process and it's a big process, so. We certainly would wanna keep council in the loop on what is going on with it, it's just that we don't know the answers to everything at this point, we kind of have to go. Through the first step, see where we are, then the second step, see where we are, so it's one of those.
And we'll have Tyler come in and do maybe a ten-minute presentation, huh, you can see the difference between what we have now and what it's going to be. I think you'll be very satisfied with the outcome, so as we move forward with the process, we'll have them come in and do a little quick uh, presentation, a demo for the council to see.
Doctor Moore, you mentioned that Eden is going away in twenty seven, uh, help me understand. With what's Eden and what do they do now, what kind of system is it?
Eden is, Eden is our current system.
Okay.
So it's, it's like when they phase out some, a legacy system, they're just gonna phase it out, so.
So it phases out in twenty twenty seven?
Yeah, it would no longer be supported, we in, uh, we do get a lot of, I mean, we spend, if you count up the hours, there's hundreds of hours every year spent with support. Support is part of the ongoing maintenance of these systems, there's no way around it. They, we wouldn't be able to call anyone to fix anything, and there's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed. When for security reasons, we would literally not want to run a system after that.
We need to invest.
We have no choice, it would simply be a matter of timing as to when.
That's why it's important to do it now.
I'd rather start now.
So the garden has run dry with Eden.
Nathan, council, if I may. I have a question, because um, there was a few points on here, the project manager and specialized consultant staff. You mentioned that one of those two might be taken out, if not both. Where does the implementation of a, like the discussions of workflows or staff-focused groups come in? Is it on one of those budget areas or another one, because I know in my experience with implementing these. New softwares, discussing workflows to integrate departments and being able to have access to those, so that departments are aware of. Where to get this information, those, those discussions are very important, so. Would that fit into project manager or specialized consultant staff or into another one of the budget areas?
Um, realistically, a lot of that will be done using city staff time in that we, this, this will be us sitting down and. We have gone through this process on the larger, on the larger ones, i.e. permitting and planning, we've literally gone through. Um, the the processes, so as we narrow this down, that would be part of the process. Right after we get the contract together, would be to start narrowing in on those, the the less big picture uh, processes. But a lot of that is not necessarily what we're considering in the project budget, in that we're already here working on getting this set up, and a lot of that is our time. Um, so they're, they're a little bit different now, whether, whether we feel that we need to hire someone to. Spearhead those efforts, or we can spearhead it in a specific department on our own, that is, that is the, where the budget will come in. So if if we sit down, if we think that sitting down with utilities is gonna be too complicated for Castulo and myself to kind of. Get into, and it would be better if we brought someone else in, and keep in mind, Tyler is gonna have experts involved in the process, that's why they're charging us so much. Um, so it'll be on our side that we're talking about hiring more people to help us, based on time constraints and knowledge gaps. So that's what the budget is, the budget is for, so whether someone's sitting in the room in those discussions to help us is what the budget's for.
Alright, I think we've talked about this plenty, what is the wishes of the city council?
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second? There's a second, can we get a rope up, please?
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado? Councilmember Alarsa?
I.
Mayor Protem Gonzalez?
I.
Mayor Hernandez?
I will move on now to resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-seven. To transfer fire engine two seventy-nine Riverside County under the current fire engine use agreement.
Okay, so this is also me. I'm gonna go through, looking a little bit more at the financial aspects of it, but um, Chief Brian White is here, he's the regi- regional. Commander for the fire services for the city, so if we technically, some of these technical input, he is here as well. All of this has been put together um, with fire. Just going through it. Okay, so as far as background, and I know council's aware of. Quite a bit of these pieces, but just to kind of start from the beginning here, the city has currently two type-one fire engines in, insert. In service, or they were in service, so engine two seventy-nine is a two thousand four type-one engine, um. It was operating as a backup engine, based on the years in service, it's, it just is, it was a backup unit. Um, then engine seventy-nine was the city's primary fire engine. That was um, struck while it was at an incident on highway eighty-six. Um, back in March, so that is no longer, the fire engine is no longer operational, and the fire department is currently operating. Out of the back, or using the backup unit two seventy-nine. Um. The city did obviously submit a claim to the insurer, and just catch, to catch council up on where we are with this. The insurer came up with a price tag to fix a fifty thousand dollars, which I'll get into a little bit where they got that. Um, and we did, we did, we did currently receive the fifty thousand dollar. Part of it was our self-retention and part of it was them, um, was them paying us, but essentially, we have fifty thousand dollars in the bank in regards to this incident right now, that we would otherwise not if we. Fix the fire. Um. So when Chief White and I kind of started talking about this. It seems simple, it seemed like we just needed a new fire engine, because the one that got wrecked was old enough to warrant replacement. However, as with most of these things, there are other mitigating factors involved, so. The other piece that comes into play is the city participates in the Riverside County Fire Engine Replacement Program under our current contract with the county. So the city pays in annually. To have access to the city's pool of fleet fire engines. And a component that also is replacement component. The city has paid in over three hundred thousand dollars today into this program. Um, so that's kind of the background of the pieces that we're looking at here. Um. The program, so the the program also does two things. Um, the program, so the, the program also does two things. It guarantees availability of a fire engine. Um, so for example, if we had a, you know, a primary engine, it had mechanical problems and there was a fire. We'd send the secondary engine, then it was, you know, on the fire, some of the broken axle on the way to fire. Then under this agreement, what would happen is county would route another engine and they would continue this process however many times were needed. Um, so that, so the, the agreement serves that purpose. Um, so the annual contribution is right now thirty-six thousand dollars. It would go up if the cost of fire inches went up. But just using that number as where we are right now. Um, the city currently, I did want to point out, currently staffs one engine. So we're, we are not discussing like being able to have two engines respond versus one engine. There would always just be one engine responding because that would be the only staffing that we have. Um, the, the other component of this plan is that it actually replace a fire engine. So if we were not part of that program, what we would have been doing along these, the, you know, along these past years. Is we would have been contributing a certain amount each month into a fund to replace the fire engine, which that was the purpose of this program. The problem that we ran into is that neither fire engine's title was actually transferred into the replacement program. So this county, while if they were transferred, would right now be figuring out how to get the city a new fire engine as a frontline unit. Due to being part of the program, we're not eligible to receive a replacement unit through the program because the title stayed with the city. So that's kind of the situation that we ended up with.
Even though we paid?
Even though we paid, yes. And it says that in the contract that we, we need to transfer the title to the county for the replacement. I did, so that, that's, that's kind of the, kind of the background on that. Now, the other piece I did want, and it's not really part of the item necessarily, but I did want to bring counsel up to speed on some of the considerations that we had with the actual engine seventy-nine, which is sitting at the corporate yard. Um, right now. Um, so it comes down, we do have service life issues at play here. So fire engine seventy-nine, it, it's twenty years is the max life. Under the fire standards that are in, that are, that we're trying to adhere to. So twenty years would be the max, but fifteen years would be the max. You'd have a frontline unit in place and then it would become a backup for five years and then it would not stay in service past twenty years. So regardless of the situation, engine seventy-nine would not have remained as a primary unit past this year. Even if it hadn't been wrecked because it would be more than fifteen years old at this point. So we would have needed a new frontline unit regardless. Um, so when they, when the insurance looked at this, they did appraise the engine without being wrecked, obviously. At a hundred and five thousand dollars and then they said we could repair it for fifty thousand dollars. However, city staff, fire staff, in looking at the situation, doesn't think that that is anywhere close to accurate. In what would actually happen if we were to try to repair the engine. For example, the adjuster didn't even pull the cab to see what's going on underneath. Um, it doesn't, nothing addresses damage to the, the actual fire apparatus, the, the water tank. And so that would have to be assessed. It would have to be put back together, then it would have to be pressure tested to meet nineteen oh one standards. For this type of fire engine. Otherwise, we couldn't put it back in place or back in service. Um, and then no, there's no mention at all of needing to meet any specifications. In regards to a public safety vehicle in this estimate or this appraisal that they did. So you can see that this, it says literally that it has been prepared with the use of crash parts supplied by sources. Other than the manufacturer. I don't think council or any residents of the city want their fire engine put back together with parts off of another crash. So this is, we don't think there's any way that we would get all of this accomplished for fifty thousand dollars anyway. The city wouldn't have to, wouldn't be responsible for the difference because it would be insured. But I'm just saying, there's no way that it's like, okay, we spent fifty thousand dollars, we at least get our fire engine back in service. That is not what we think would happen on that. So it's, just, there were a lot of pictures in the report, but just so council can kind of sort of see what we're talking about here. You can see the, the word buckled is used extensively in the description, description buckled, smashed. Uh, not necessarily a fifty thousand dollar sounding repair just from the terms used. And then this is, you can see that the back end of the unit here is kind of smashed out. This is the fire tank or the water tank. Nobody's assessing what damage, if any, is being done across, across the divide there. So this is, so again, this is where we are with the engine seventy-nine currently. So once, once we're looking at all these pieces and kind of putting them together, our overall take on this. Um, we can't return engine seventy-nine to service in its former capacity regardless of fixing or not fixing. So that wasn't really an option there. The, now the question came down to putting this, the fire, so putting fire engine two seventy-nine into the county pool is the other option. Um, obviously, the city could continue to own its own fire engines, but then we would need to, we'd be bringing an item to council to start the purchase process. And an eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar new frontline engine, if the city wanted to retain its own fire vehicles. Um, we do, we already mentioned that we do pay into the replacement program. The replacement program is just simply an amortization of a new fire truck, just so council understands, over twenty years. That was the purpose of the thing. Um, there's no, there's no real cost for transferring the fire engine into the county pool. I mean, there'd be DMVPs and registration paperwork and probably, uh, city attorney sometime, but miniscule costs. We don't have to pay to put it in the program or anything like that. And then we, the, once it's in the program, then the city would be eligible for replacement engine. Um, and it would pride, be prioritized relatively high in getting a replacement engine in that it is so old. So in other words, it's a two thousand four engine. So in two thousand twenty-four, we would, it wouldn't be eligible to be a, uh, backup engine anywhere at all. Any, so they would need to get it replaced out before that. Right now, getting a replacement engine, we're looking at a year and a half out. So there's no, I mean, the, any which way we do this, it's gonna take a bit, a bit of time. But, um, but that's kind of what we're looking at here to come to the recommendation that we take fire engine two seventy-nine and place it in the county pool, transferring title to the county. That from just a sheer, um, economic perspective is the most, is the optimal route to go here. Looking towards, um, scrapping out engine seventy-nine. Um, so that, that's just putting the big pieces, the picture together. I did as a footnote here because this did play into it a little bit. We did apply for the FEMA grant, which I know council's aware of, to purchase a new fire engine. Um, we have been, and the grants division has been checking daily to see if we got the award and we just simply have not gotten an answer, one way or the other yet. They are phasing in answers to different agencies, but we haven't heard on our specific agency. Um, if this grant were to come into play, we would not be able to transfer title into the county pool. Of using federal funds to buy assets would preclude us from transferring that asset without it going back to, um, to the agency that. Uh, you know, purchased the asset. So the city would still end up with a fire engine in its name if we, if that were the case. But then we would just have a brand new fire engine and I, it really wouldn't be an issue or have any bearing because we would still want engine two seventy-nine to be in the pool. So future replacements would be, would be available. So just since I know that was on council's mind as well. Um, so I, that's, that's where we are with it. The recommendation is to move it into the county pool at this point and go from there, but.
That was a lot of information. A lot of information. So let me simplify it because this is what I'm understanding. Two seventy-nine belongs to us. And it's really no good and it's gonna be outdated. So, and so we can't put it into the pool because it belongs to us. So we gotta give it to the county so that we could then get a replacement. That's it. That's, that's it. Cause that was a lot and I'm just like, okay.
And seventy-nine is broken.
And seventy-nine is no good and it's no good because it's old and it's gonna be, have to go to the fire truck cemetery at some point.
Send it to our sister city.
I mean, I mean, that, that, see, that's the thing. Yes, because then the next step would be for us to start the whole process where we take it out to Ontario, have it evaluated. It costs us, you know, maybe six, eight thousand dollars towing it both ways, get a second opinion, then we start in with a process with the insurance company, then we're paying legal to go back. So essentially, that would be the, the cheapest and quickest approach.
Nathan, were, were both two seventy-nine and seventy-nine supposed to be, were both titles supposed to be transferred to the county or just one?
I mean theoretically, if you sign up for that program, that would have been the logical way to approach that, to put them both in, yes.
What bothers me is that we paid three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Honestly, it's this kind of waste of money there. Since obviously had it been in there already, then we would have received that replacement. And I think that's what bothers some for me. If we should be awarded the FEMA engine, um, then obviously we're, we're, you know, if approved. We're gonna transfer the title from two seventy-nine to the county. And then should we be awarded that FEMA truck? Then what happens with two seventy-nine?
We, we would still have an engine in the pool. So it would, they, it would be, it would be essentially a backup through the pool until they rotated out. Because it's an older backup, because we would still need a backup engine applicable to the city after two thousand twenty-four.
It would just serve as a backup, though, but we would not be receiving another truck.
Well, since we can only staff one, I mean, I'm sure the county would let us have two sitting on the driveway. But I mean, essentially, we would just take the new truck and make that the city's primary vehicle.
If we get a new fire, get a new fire station, then we will have that fire engine allocated to that fire station.
Yeah, and then if we up the staffing to where we were servicing two vehicles, then, then one would come from the city pool at that point. And then we would have the city's own fire engine and another one.
But at least, well, I'm saying for the future though, because what I'm saying is obviously when I'm getting a fire station, you know, anytime in the next few years. But because of that, the life of that fire engine, which is twenty years, you know, should we have it ten years from now? Then we would have that fire engine available because it still has ten years of life left in it.
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
So I think you're asking us to transfer two seventy-nine. No, 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 to transfer to the county's program. The county then gets us everybody. I'll motion to approve this.
A second.
There's a motion. There's a second. Uh, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Aye.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
I move now to resolution number W two thousand two dash four-five. Adopting level two demand reduction actions as outlined by the authority water shortage contingency plan. Mr. Estrada?
Hey, good, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to update you on emergency regulations adopted by the state water board. Um, which requires the council to adopt the resolution declaring a level two water shortage and implement all level two demand reduction actions. Set forth in the city's water shortage contingency plan, which the council adopted last year. Uh, the, the resolution also prohibits the use of potable water for irrigation of non-functional turf. At commercial, industrial and institutional sites as defined by the state water board. And I have a real quick presentation that's gonna kind of give you a sense of how we got to these drought regulations. And, and really just briefly explain what it means for us here at the city of Coachella. So, uh, these drought regulations basically, uh, came from the state water resource control board. And what they require is that all water, uh, urban water suppliers basically enact with what's called their level two. Stage two shortage plan. And what that means is, uh, basically all, uh, urban water suppliers are required by, by state law. To, uh, put together what they call urban water management plans. We put those together every five years. We put the last one together, uh, which was the urban water management plan of twenty twenty that was adopted last year. And with that plan, we adopted, uh, as part of that plan, you adopt called the water shortage contingency plan. So that plan, I, I attached to the item on, 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 uh, on the agenda. It basically already has a predefined, uh, actions that would come when you trigger that, that shortage level. And so on top of that, uh, the triggering of the stage two, the water board also mandated that, uh, we banned the irrigation. Of what they, uh, define as non-functional turf. And there's a definition there of what that means. It's turf that is solely for fundamental purposes, that is not used for any recreational purposes. It's not a part of, uh, any civic or community events. And, uh, it's not for sport fields, it's not for parks. And then there are, there are other exceptions where you can't continue to irrigate. If the turf is surrounded by trees, uh, that would otherwise die if you didn't irrigate the turf. So when you think about what, what that means for the city, I really couldn't think of any real location where this would, would, would apply. I, I think everywhere that we have turf, for the most part, is at parks, um, like the Bagduma Park, the, uh, Veterans Park here. Or you have turf, but it's, you know, part of, uh, a bigger thing where, where you have trees and things like that. And so, so that's kind of where, where these drought regulations came from and what they mean. Here's a timeline of how they, how they kind of, how we got to where we're at now. At the beginning of the year, um, the water board, uh, basically enacted basic, uh, water waste restrictions. Those are basic things like when, uh, when you wash your car, put a water hose on your gun so that the hose isn't running. Um, when you wanna clean your driveway, uh, make sure that you're not hosing it down, make sure they use a broom. Kind of very basic type of, uh, water restrictions. And, and then, uh, just recently in May is when they kind of doubled down with the banning of irrigation. On what they call non-functional turf. And then, um, what they did, as, as I mentioned earlier, they require. All agencies that have an urban water manage, management plan to basically enact their level two, uh, uh, shortage. And so what does that mean for us? The, the proposal here is that you would adopt, uh, the resolution. That basically enacts that, uh, shortage level. And level two it are those things that, that you see there on this, uh, on this slide, which basically goes from two one to two seven. Uh, really, the biggest impact here is the banning of, of outdoor irrigation, uh, with overspray. Uh, during daylight hours. Uh, the other things are, uh, water at restaurants shouldn't be served unless it's requested. Uh, that we should encourage non-potable water for construction. When, when there's a need for water for construction, for us to discourage overseeding, for us to expand our outreach. And for us to increase, uh, water waste patrols. Um, the, again, the biggest, the biggest impact to, and this is all in the spirit of reducing water usage by twenty percent. So when you think about the different, uh, shortage levels, when you, when you declare a shortage level one. You're trying to reduce ten percent of your water use as a city. When you do level two, you're trying to get up to twenty percent. When you do level three, you're trying to get to thirty percent. So with level two, we're trying to reduce by twenty percent as compared to, uh, the year twenty nineteen. So, uh, most of these aren't really gonna have an impact to that reduction. Uh, more than the, the banning of the outdoor irrigation, uh, on, on turf, uh, during daylight hours. And, uh, so, uh, you know, why is it important for us to adopt this resolution? Well, one, it complies with, uh, the state water board's emergency drought regulations. Uh, we have to comply with these when we, uh, are being considered for grants, for loans that are state funded. Uh, one of the things that the state does, whenever you apply for a, for a, for a loan or a grant related to water. They make sure that you're complying with, with all the regulation as it relates to, did you complete an urban water management plan? Okay, did, uh, are, we told you to, uh, enact your level two shortage? Did you do that? Okay. And so those are sometimes things that, that they request as attachments, uh, as part of, uh, grant application. So, so that's important for us to adopt these. Another reason is, uh, there's, there's five, uh, six water agencies, uh, here in the Coachella Valley. Uh, this year, uh, or the, this, when we adopted the urban water management plan, uh, in twenty twenty, it was the first time that, that we did it as a region. Uh, prior to that, every agency would kind of do its own standalone urban water management plan. Although the bulk of the plan pretty much contained the same information because we, we depend on the same source of water. So one of the new things that we did this time, uh, we created a regional urban water management plan. Where, where the, the entire document was, was pretty much the same for everyone. And the only thing that differed was these, uh, water shortage contingency plans, which were really tailored specifically to each of the agencies. And so, um, for the most part, we try to align our water shortage contingency plans, but they do very slightly. Uh, to kind of be tailored more to. To kind of be tailored more to the to the field of the community. And one of the reasons why we wanted to kind of be. As much as possible. Consistent with our with our reduction actions is because of the benefit that it brings when we do regional advertising. Or regional messaging as it relates to the importance of 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 conserving, right? And so here's an example. Of some of the drought messaging that we've already been working on as part of the region. Which includes all those water agencies that you see there, that's Coachella Valley Water District, Indian Water Authority. Set the city of Coachella, Myoma Dunes Water District, Desert Water Agency, and Mission Springs Water District. So these these are messages that that we work as a region to try to achieve, you know, that reduction across the basin. This is something that is it's been an active group for several years now. Resseth is now kind of working with these folks to to to. For us to provide input on on what a messaging should look like. So we do these, we do this messaging in English and Spanish. We do it in. Facebook posts, we do it in newspaper advertising, we we put it on billboards across the valley. And so here's, these are just some examples of of what that messaging looks like, focused on. You know, don't don't use the irrigation during daylight hours. Try to try to skip over seating. And make use of the water rebates that are available. We also have a page called conserve Coachella. That's where we have all our information as it relates to our rebate programs. For turf, for toilet rebates, for efficient toilets, for smart controllers. We we've updated all that with this information. We have a bill ready, bill insert that's ready so that once you approve this resolution, we're going to put out a bill insert. In our water bill that's going to contain this information as well, kind of letting folks know that we're in a drought, we need to try to conserve. And so that's that's really what this means. That's that's what it means for the city. And with that, that's kind of the presentation.
Do we still have that turf replacement program?
We do. We actually, one of the one of the things that. That allows us to have the program is our program historically, since we've ever had a conservation program. Has been dependent on grant funding. We we make no allocations through our budget. Process for for those type of programs. So they're they're completely funded one hundred percent by grants. And we've been fortunate enough that. You know, since about maybe, you know, twenty ten, for over ten years now, we've consistently been able to receive grant funding. As part of this regional collaborative effort to 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 promote regional conservation, we 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 put in applications as a region. And and we've received funding multiple times through different funding rounds. The the round that we're in right now is is under Prop one. We had some money in Prop one, round one. That that gave us about three hundred and thirty five thousand. Two hundred thousand of that was specifically for turf and a hundred and thirty five was for. Toilet rebates and smart controllers. The that on the two hundred thousand was completely depleted. It seems to be the most the most popular. There there's still a substantial amount of money in the in the other bucket, which is for the toilet rebates and the smart controllers. The two hundred thousand has been exhausted as of, you know, maybe two months ago. But there was a special money that was created as part of the drought emergency through the states that. That kind of they put out a a last minute application for additional monies. We applied for those additional monies. We. We were awarded those additional monies. It's not a big amount, but it is. More money that can help us continue to progress. We do have money available right now. We we probably have about a hundred and seventy five thousand. That that was that was the the new set aside that we got. And then right now, we're in the process of. Of the 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 funding round for Prop two, round two just opened up. We applied for more funding for turf under that program, and we're asking for about a hundred and seventy five thousand as a region. We're confident that we're going to get that, but when we get that, that a hundred and seventy five thousand gets split between the agency. So we're probably looking at about another. One hundred and twenty five thousand on top of the one seventy five. So I think that that's kind of putting us at around three hundred thousand.
I I asked that, Costolo, because we're going to be imposing, right? Some some new restrictions, so we should remind our residents that there's monies available to convert their turf into. Water saving plants or.
And and that's what, you know, we we've kind of doubled down on the messaging on the on the the ability the ability of these of these programs and and the funding. And, you know, one of the things that we're working with Maritza and Resseth is on, you know, things like El Grito event, you know, we'll have a booth out there. Which will have all the applications related to these rebate programs. And and, you know, kind of just put the message out there.
Costolo, I'm trying to understand what is the amount because. For turf, because you mentioned there's a hundred still left for toilet replacements and smart meters. And can that money be reprogrammed?
That's something that I we would have to make a request of the state to see if we can repurpose it, but but even. Not taking into account that the that money that I mentioned for the toilets and the smart controllers. We have a hundred, a hun- about a hundred and seventy seven that just came in.
That just came.
That just came in.
So I I'm going to ask that 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 money go directly to residents. I know that the city in the past has used some of that money to do its own turf conversion. Back to my park, et cetera, and and that money left, the money was gone. And and. You know, when we look at like what the direct benefit to the resident is, I don't know how many homes got done last year. I don't, I really don't know, but.
I mean, we, I mean, if you want a number for quick calculation, we do have a a a restrict, not, I don't say a restriction, but an upper limit. Of of the amount that we give to a resident, and that's three thousand. We we give a three dollar per square foot rebate. So up to three thousand. So so we kept it at about, you know, a hundred thousand square feet. I mean, typically, I think that covers a big area of turf, but we do cap it at that so that we can try to spread. The funds as much as possible. One of the things that you might have heard in the news lately. Is that there are cities who are partnering up with the water agencies to match. The money that the water agencies are are creating for for their districts. So for example. Ranch Mirage, right? They the they're serviced by Coachella Valley Water District. They they matched a three dollar. Through their budget process. So and I think Palm Desert is trying to do the same. So those are other ways to supplement the funding. If it was the wish of the council. There are there are continuous grant opportunities to to even get more money also, and we are on top of those as well.
Yeah, no, and I I think that's great. The one question I I have, and this is something that the council should know. Can we meet this requirement? Because when you look at us like our per capita water use or per household water use. We're already the lowest in the in the Coachella Valley in terms of how much water each house is drawing from the aquifer. So once we put these restrictions in, like, can we actually, can our residents reduce more? And if you look at some of the landscape of some of the houses. They're pretty barren, like, you know, there's 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 dirt in the front. And so I I. I I bring that up just because of the fact that we've seen kind of what the conservation message have been over time. We've seen how our residents has responded. We've seen like after the drought, they're not. Really making the improvements on their lawn. They just let it go dry. You know, and 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 so, yes, we got into this for the drought, but even the story is is that. Coachella residents are the lowest like users of water of any city in the Coachella Valley. I mean, that was a that was a point that we brought up to to the state. So hopefully, we won't get penalized if.
No, one of the.
You know.
Yeah, well, no, you you make a point like, you know, one of the one of the. Benefits, maybe call it benefit, but a difference between this drought and the drought that we had. In twenty fourteen, where we kind of did something similar where we said, you know, we were really trying to mandate a reduction because at that time. The way that the state rolled out that drought mandate, it came with penalties by the state where they assigned. Different water agencies, a different level of reduction based on their water use per capita. So if you were like extremely high, they they would say you're required to reduce by thirty five percent. And whereas you were, if you were really low, they would say, well, you reduce by maybe fifteen percent or twenty percent. Because you're already low. I think that was a a time where we said a lot of things, we, you know, we we shared information. That's why the state this time is kind of allowing a lot more local control, call it. And and that is something that we share with them is. You know, our agency, when you compare it maybe statewide or just here at the Coachella Valley. Our water use per capita is is already extremely low, sometimes triple double. Of what others are using. So so, you know, you could kind of say there's a lot less to trim. And so it becomes more difficult, but but that that state's aware of that. We do, we do monthly reporting on our water use. And one of the things that the monthly report requires is for us to to record our water use per capita. So so it is something that they track.
Costolo, for the two hundred thousand dollars that was spent for the turf rebate program, was the majority of that given to? Residents?
You you know, I I I would say that in general, it was probably fifty fifty. I would say that maybe a hundred thousand went to residents and a hundred thousand went for. City projects. We we do, as a city, have areas where we can do turf conversions. And 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 we use, these monies are 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 also allowed to be used for those things. And so the state, what the state really looks at is is are you reducing turf, right? And turf at. City site is the same as turf at a at a residence home, but but we are, I think, moving forward. You know, wanting to make this more of a of a program that might be more directed at residents. I I I did share an idea. I'll be I'll be honest with you. With some of the additional funding that's coming in, and and there's, there seems to be a lot of opportunity. You know, I did share that information with our public works director, knowing that. That perhaps there's still a lot of L M Ds kind of catch basins that that have a lot of turf. And maybe those need to turn turn into desert friendly landscapes, also to maybe help sustain the levy. Because the turf, you know, when it's heavily landscaped with turf, the the cost of that L M D, I imagine, is higher. But sometimes I think we don't have the funding internally to make those conversions for, and you're not going to put it on the levy. So so there might be an opportunity to not just maybe get the dollar amounts that we need for the residents, but. Perhaps get the funding that's necessary to maybe finish some of those conversions. But those are conversations, those are kind of. You know, ideas that we shoot back and forth to to just try to maximize the amount of funding that we can pull from the state.
You mean when requesting additional monies? Because I I would hate to take more away from fifty fifties. It's quite a bit. So it's probably about thirty three homes that were given to a free rate. So, of course, all of us would like to see that number be higher, you know, and I'm sure our residents would also. I do, I do think that the toilet replacement program is also really critical. And why is it that we we're not getting so many applications for that?
You know, it just, for whatever reason, it's not. May maybe we are getting the same number of application. It's just that the 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 rebate for the for the toilet is. Maybe. You know, ten times slower. So you need, you know, one application on the turf equals like ten. Because the we we cap the we cap the toilet rebate at a hundred and fifty dollars. Right? Where whereas we cap the turf at three thousand. And and we do it at one fifty because generally you could buy a. A a a nice efficient toilet at a at a hundred and fifty dollars. There's there, you don't need more than that. So but but to your point, to to eat up that dollar amount, you'd require, you know, so so many much more applications.
That makes sense.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll go ahead and take councilmember Beaman, Jacinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Hi.
Councilmember Galarza.
Hi.
Mayor Procham Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
We've reached eight fifteen. We'll move to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make some public comments? See, now we'll move on now to item number twenty five. This is. A construction contract with Petrocam Materials Innovation. Andrew.
On the staff report that it's included in the staff budget, it was included in the in the budget already. And so, I mean, unless there's specific questions, I'd 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 like to make a recommendation to approve.
It's a slurry, so.
Councilmember Beaman, Jacinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Hi.
Councilmember Galarza.
Hi.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi. We'll move forward now and. Item twenty six, this is a construction contract with three peaks for. And the amount of six hundred and twenty four thousand with a contingency of sixty two thousand for the construction. Andrew.
Yes, thank you again, and. I have a presentation, so I'll share my screen. I recently brought the vacuum of basketball court to city council to discuss the entire project, so. This should be. Very familiar to everyone. Again, the existing conditions are for basketball courts and. The this project is to rehabilitate all of the basketball courts. This is at the corner of Frederick and Avenue fifty two. The existing conditions, the existing fence is dilapidated, the electrical panel is dilapidated, and the asphalt surface. Has significant cracking and and has begun to fail. Another existing condition out there is that the basketball courts are not regulation size. So one of the aspects of this project is to move the hoops back so that we can have the courts be regulation size. Additional aspects, as we discussed. Before going out to bid, was we wanted to have add alternates in the project to. Change out all of the light heads and completely. Fix this retention basin area with grounded rip wraps that we can improve the aesthetics and the performance of the rip wrap area. And also improve the aesthetics and performance of the. Of the lighting that is at the park. As far as the bid, we went out to the community to ask what would they would like to see and. Based on the surveys that were proposed, they wanted to see one tennis court, two pickleball courts. And two and a half full-size basketball courts. The base bid for the entire project is the resurfacing and painting of the courts. Resizing the courts so that they are full size, full regulation size, and installing new rims. And then repairing all of the fence and doing the ADA accessibility. And repairing all of the existing electrical that's on site. The add alternates that we bid out were replacing the light fixtures. Repairing the entire retention basin with grounded rip wrap. And installing wind windscreen around all of the new fencing that will be installed. This picture was presented at the last meeting as well, as far as our design. After the project is milled and replaced and the surface is rehabilitated, a. We it will have a court style finish with the abrasive paint for the. Nice court surfacing. And as discussed in the last meeting, the colors we're proposing to use would be a tan background and then using the. The green and gold or the green and yellow colors to to match the same colors that are used for the Coachella Valley High School. And we're also proposing to put City of Coachella logos at the center. Tip-off location at the basketball courts. Regarding the schedule, this schedule has been updated from the last meeting. C B E G has approved all the plans. C B G has approved all the plans and constructions, and we took the project out for public bid. We did receive two responsive bids, and the apparent little bidder was Three Peaks Corporation at a cost of six twenty four, three ten twenty one. I will comment that a a third uh contractor was late to the bid, so their bid was not opened. Um, but there were three contractors who attempted to bid on the project, but only two of them arrived on time. Only two of them are included in the staff report. Uh, for the current construction schedule. Um, once we have the contracts approved and awarded, there is some additional compliance from C B G as far as. Having C B G approve the contracts and the submittals. And once we have final approval from them, we do anticipate construction starting um in October. The original estimate that I brought to city council, I had estimated a total. Construction cost of six hundred thousand, so I was pleased to see that. The bid came in very close to what the estimate was that was presented to city council. Um, so the base bid items came out to five fourteen eight oh two. The ad alternatives came out to a hundred and nine thousand five oh seven. For a total construction budget of six twenty four, three ten. Um, so since it did come in so close to the estimate that had been originally proposed. Staff recommendation is to award the entire project and all of the add alternatives. The total project cost, including contingency. Uh, if contingency has been used, any contingency ends being used as project would be six eighty six, seven forty one. And the entire project would be funded by existing C B G funding sources. Um, we are not requesting any additional transfers or monies from other accounts other than the C B G sources. That concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions about the overall project?
Well.
Approved.
It's needed.
Second.
Um, Nathan, or Andrew, I'm sorry, I have a question regarding the. The resurfacing.
Yes.
So, are we gonna go, are we gonna grind that to, you know, two, three inches or? And then re pour on top of that simply because, you know, there are a lot of cracks, and so I'm wondering if the foundation underneath is. Sound.
Um, yes, we actually did. Uh, geotechnical coring of the of the basketball court. Uh, so we cored the the site in three different areas just to make sure that the base was still intact. And there is a six-inch concrete slab underneath the existing asphalt, so it looks like um. The court was originally a concrete surface and at some end. About fifteen to twenty years ago, they put a two-inch asphalt overlay on top of that.
Yep.
Um, but when they placed that asphalt overlay, they just used uh regular asphalt. Um, and they didn't put a paint surface on top of it, which actually seals the asphalt and makes it last longer. For our product, um, and when we did the course, we actually found that the asphalt surface, the underlying concrete subsurface. Was actually in pretty, it was in good condition. And it has base under as well, so we're pretty confident that the underlying surface is a good surface. Uh, when we repair it this time, we will completely remove the asphalt and we'll be using a um. Polymer modified asphalt, so it has a reinforcing kind of like a Kevlar fibers throughout the asphalt. Uh, which make it more flexible and also make it less likely to crack. And then because we're putting the additional court surfacing on top of it, that will also seal it and prevent cracking. Also, before we lay down the asphalt, we'll do a crack sealing and a skim coat on top of the concrete. In order to completely seal that surface and make sure uh. You have that additional layer, that additional flexible layer. Uh, before you put the final asphalt surface down to help prevent any cracking from reflecting to the final, to the top surface.
There is an intern here in the city of Coachella that did that project on a grant. By the name of Anna Colin, I don't know if you remember, Carlos, that's who did that out of New York way back in the day. All right, there's a motion in a second. Can we get a real pop, please?
Yes, council member Biman Hasinto.
Yes.
Council member Delgado.
Hi.
Council member Galarza.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi. We'll move on now to, well, we did public comments already. We'll move on now to council comments, reports, and miscellaneous comments. I'll start to my left council member Delgado.
Um, the only comments and requests that I have, Gabriel, is just what I've been, you know, already requesting is. You know, to wait at the energy exchange session or meeting that we're supposed to have. Um, as well as the economic development subcommittee meeting to. You know, review the small business communities processes because they find it um challenging. And really don't know where to go, so I'm still waiting on that as well. Uh, and then additionally, as as last year, we had discussed um. Or some of the parks, some of the fields where there was over irrigation and then other areas that were under irrigated. And then to do an assessment so we can have it all balanced out, because clearly. Where it's over irrigated, it makes sense only to kind of reduce water usage there, but then some areas were. You know, becoming dry, so just kind of an assessment to see. Or to make sure that everything's balanced out and, you know, it's consistent throughout all the fields. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Council member Galarza. Um, interested, couldn't see you, I mean, thoughts, come back soon.
Yeah. Council member Biman Hasinto.
I have no comments.
Mayor Protem.
Looking forward to El Grito on Friday, it's Saturday, we are, community will come out and join us.
I think they were, plenty of advertisement out there.
Yep.
You got it.
Uh, council member Galarza.
Um, yeah, just real quick, uh, uh, I have a, tomorrow we'll be meeting with the committee, I saw on. Conservation and Energy Committee, so I'm nothing to report on that today, but um, very, you know, just last week. Uh, was had the honor of attending the League of Cities Conference with my colleagues here. Had a great time, uh, you know, learning, actually have my slip, I need to turn into Andrea regarding some of the trainings I attended. Um, overall great, uh, to have attended, learn more about. The work uh that other cities are doing, get a chance to network and. And uh further gain skills and abilities to better service our our city. Um, also, I wanted to just recognize leadership over mayor and our team regarding the uh grant for the Annex Library. I think that's, you know, amazing, um, that we're able to get, receive that the funding. Um, uh, and very excited to see the turnout. Uh, just I want to congratulate um, better for the restaurant on re- be recognized as Restaurant of the Year for the eighty fifty six. Um, I asked the city, maybe next meeting, we can bring him on and 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 give him a proclamation. Um, just to recognize, I know eighty fifty six is a large. Assembly district and be nice, you know, that it can, someone came out of our city, uh, was went Sacramento and was recognized there, it's a. Uh, one of the accomplishments, but the symbolism too uh is amazing and uh. Uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, now we're excited for to celebrate El Grito. With our 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 colleagues and our community members, our residents, uh, tens of thousands of people that attend. Um, uh, maybe next year we can get more diverse music, I, you know, I know this is very uh, there, but um. Population is different, so regardless, I think that that we're, you know, we're gonna have a good time and a lot of people are excited about being there. Um, I'm excited to have a good time and and celebrate. Thank you.
I've never, it's always a good time at the at the Grito, um. Selena and staff and the library staff as well, Denise out at the library. Uh, you know, good call on the grant and uh I'm very pleased that, you know, we received four point five eight million. I did get a call from the assembly member letting us know about the uh that grant, and so. We need to thank him as well, because he's been very instrumental in making sure that the city uh is is getting dollars, is getting resources. Um, and, you know, hopefully in October as well, we'll hear back for for the transformative community grant that uh that we applied for, so that that is. Um, exciting, just to report to the council, I'll be um on Friday meeting with the governor and and as well as Antonio Villas Rosa. Uh, who has been named the governor's infrastructure uh committee liaison, and so they want to get a good understanding of. What are the infrastructure challenges and needs uh for eastern end of the Coachella Valley? Uh, obviously, because there is federal dollars that are going to be. Uh, moving down the 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 pipe and they want to position California to receive. Uh, those grants, uh, we also got an opportunity too at the League of Cities. Uh, to uh meet with Michelle Martinez, the California Transportation Commissioner. And uh, we have a a subsequent meeting coming up in the next two days. Uh, with the the director of the C T C to try to reposition our project on every fifty. Uh, so that we can try to uh get the fifty million dollar grant that we've been. Trying and trying and trying for the last ten years to get, but we are, at least at this point, we, you know, the C T C is asking to meet directly with us, so I I do want to thank. Her and follow up as well, Selena with them uh on that potential. Opportunity, I wanna take a little notice and give Gabriel Perez, and I don't know if it was you or Louis. Just uh some, some like an adequate way of of. As the construction is going on on the new homes in Coachella, I noticed that uh. You know, we are not putting in grass in the retention basin, but actually putting in desert landscape and rock, and it looks very, very attractive. Uh, from the street side, from the streetscape. And uh, and you know, I think that also looks good, and then as well, uh, you know, as the construction of the Starbucks. Uh, is coming about uh the the tree, or I'm sorry, the palm trees, the the small palm, that I think I made that request. And then them filling them through has really kind of made a difference. And the uh, the actual street improvements and and sidewalk improvements. Uh, are look really, really good, so just thank you, Andrew, for insisting that, you know, those sidewalks and and. Uh, that type of design get uh get approved, and I was reading on the staff report. That uh, the sidewalks on First Street will incorporate the bubble vehicle lighting. Uh, which is going to be a good thing for continuity throughout uh downtown, so I I I just want to just give you guys a. Uh, an adequate way, out of girls for for all the. Work that you guys are doing and and the way the city is is actually looking, or the way the city is looking. You know, I've got, I've gotten a lot of compliment uh regarding, you know, just the improvements, the physical improvements. Uh, that are very visible and our residents seem to be very happy. Uh, our seniors. Love them, love them, and we've been over there and uh, you know, we did have a gentleman come, Mr. Uh, Barasas came in. Araham came in last meeting and talked about a pool table. Uh, and I had a conversation with Maria and a few of the other. Uh, seniors out there and said, hey, what do you, what do you guys think? And and so. Uh, they said they're okay, they said that they that they would enjoy a pool table and that that's something that we should. Uh, look to try to grab or try to get for them, so I wanted to put that on uh on. Your radar uh to see how we can get them a pool table. Uh, and the other thing they requested, and I want to see if we can help them too, is uh. They clay, clay, uh, you know, they do arts and crafts over there. And back in the day, we used to supply them with clay and uh the clay. Uh, is no more running out or hard to get, so I'm in a task staff to try to see if we can help them with those resources. The other thing that they mentioned as well uh is the bus, and it's broken down in the past, we've replaced it. Then then we didn't have a driver, and then we replaced the driver, and I think we're back in action, but. They kind of did mention that the, you know, the lifetime of the bus might, you know. Might become an issue, I have some ideas, I think R C T C may have some funding, or even Sunline, where we can try to ask R C T C. Uh, for for a bus replacement, we are very unique in Riverside County. And that we're the only uh uh city that goes and picks up our seniors and brings them to the senior center. And that's something that that we need to keep doing. And and I think the message to our funding agencies is that we're the only ones, and some nonprofits do it, or, you know, so it's a little take. Pick up seniors and take them to the doctors, or they'll pick up veterans and take them to the veteran healthcare, but we're the only ones that take our seniors. Pick them up, drop them off, give them food, take a doctor, and and they're uh. You know, they're very excited, so I I I want to just ask staff to work with me, R C T C, to see if we can try to get a little bit of money. Uh, to replace uh uh the seniors on the educational side, there's two areas that. Obviously, we've been getting a lot of uh, a lot, a lot of feedback from, and, you know, uh, Coachella Valley High School. You know, that's a, that's a high school that that. I think all of us loved, and and we all went to school there, and it's got so 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 much sentiment. But uh, you know, the the, our residents are asking, hey, can we, can we um. Build another high school, and I told them, I was like, hey, that's not our decision, but we support that decision, and I'm wondering if we can get a resolution. To the city council that says, hey, the city Coachella uh supports a new Coachella Valley High School. And we can send that over to our friends at the school district. Uh, because I know they too also support and want to see a new high school, and then the other area that is of a lot of concern. Particularly as it as it goes through the region is the College of the Desert. Uh, the College of the Desert, there there, I remember Joe Kineman coming here and talking about the this council supporting measure C C. Uh, and the question was asked, I remember it was Mayor Protem Emmanuel Martinez asked the question about. Can Coachella or will Coachella get some investment from this bond? And he responded in the affirmative, yes. Uh, he responded and said that there was provisions in the the uh bond that would allow. Uh, for Coachella to build a campus, and he says, I will court you, or if you court me. And so we need to hold C O D to that, and if you follow the rhetoric of. What's going on throughout the Coachella Valley and the western end of the Coachella Valley. There's folks over there that are proposing a Taj Mahal and for the hospitality industry, and while we get. You know, the need of the hospitality industry and their needs, that doesn't necessarily make our needs any less. And so I'd like to bring a resolution back next meeting as well, asking C O D to uh commit and bring and uh and stay firm. On their commitment to uh the city of Coachella as well as uh, you know, the the Mecca campus. If anybody followed the Mecca campus, uh, they were supposed to build a huge uh campus out there, and instead we got twelve trailers.
With no toilets.
With no, so there's an injustice, and uh, and so this council. Uh, and myself, you know, it's, that's a fight that we're gonna have, and we're willing to have. Cause we will not stay quiet when it comes to investment of the College of the Desert, and it doesn't have to be in downtown, it needs to be in the city of Coachella, it can be anywhere. Where that campus will will deem fit, but our kids deserve to go to campus, to go to college. And, you know, not be relegated to some other uh industry, but, you know, to really have and dream for the future, become. City administrators, teachers, electrical company workers, you know, those are the things that. I T, uh, you know, technicians and and experts and attorneys, firefighters and cops, I I think that's something that. All of our students in 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 Coachella and Mecca and Thermal deserve, and so. I want to put that it, that issue out there and continue to fight it, and I'm asked, I'm asked for two resolutions next meeting. One, uh, again, for support of a new high school, and two, for support of making sure that C O D. Uh, keeps their commitment to the eastern end of the Coachella Valley. With that, uh, Mr. City Manager, Dr. Martin, those are my comments.
I concur, Mayor.
Thank you.
So do I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that uh Fine Food Bank extended an invitation to the council. For Thursday, May, September twenty second at the Coachella Valley High School to do a food distribution for Hunger Action Month campaign. Uh, please wear orange from ten to eleven. Also, staff will be doing a, we, last year, we started a volunteering once a year. Staff uh on their own time volunteers at Fine Food Bank, and we'll be doing that again this year on the twenty third. Uh, from eight thirty to ten thirty uh for Hunger Action Day, then that's all my comments.
All right, we are adjourned, see everybody. Well, Friday, if you guys are going to the tribe, and and Saturday, we're going to.